Good morning. The State Board of Education is called to order. Please acknowledge that all members are present. The mission of the Kansas State Board of Education is to prepare Kansas students for lifelong success through rigorous quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents. Our vision is for Kansas to lead the world in the success of each student. At this time, would you please pause with me for a moment of silence? At this time, will you please join me with the prayers of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we approve the agenda this morning, this does not need to be voted on, but I need to tell you in advance a couple of things that are going to come out in the Chair's Report that I want you to be thinking about because there are a couple of things that we're going to discuss underlegislative. In your packet, there is a kind of a summary of one of the bills that was presented that I think both Ann and Michelle have in the past talked about some things that we may want to talk about in those bills and how we're going to react. So we're going to start that discussion during the Chair's Report when that comes up. And another issue that's going to come up during the Chair's Report, some of those of us that were seeking reelection all had to face a lot of things that were disinformation during that campaign, and perception is reality. So a lot of that disinformation or inaccurate information was believed. And so I have asked Denise to come in at this time because I think we need to discuss those things and how we should react. This is not a time to whine. This is a time to actually learn how to react and maybe do a better job of messaging what we're doing. For instance, I'm going to give you just one short example. Every time I went to a forum, they talked about we need to honor those career pathways. We've been talking about that for eight years that I've been on the board. It's like it was brand new and that we had not been doing that. And so those are the sorts of things that we need to do a better job of messaging. And so that's the purpose of bringing that discussion up today. Are there any other changes? That's not a change in the agenda. That's just a warning that those things are going to come up under the Chair's Report. I've also asked Mark to prepare how to react if we decide to do something with that bill. But it's premature for us to have the executive session today that's on the agenda because he can't, or whatever it is, he can't prepare if he doesn't know what our thought processes are. So I have asked him to be prepared to do that under executive session in the September meeting, and I'm also going to ask the legislative liaisons at that time to at least have a draft of our legislative priorities for the next legislative session at that time. So that'll all be together as an agenda item in our September board meeting. Any other additions to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead, Melanie.
Thank you, Chairman. There we go. How about now? There we go.
See if yours works, Mark.
Thank you. Agenda item for today, item 13, Act on KISA Recommendations Received in June. Those were received in July. So we just need to amend June to July.
Okay, so we just need to make a perfect correction. Okay, anything else? Michelle?
No?
Yeah.
Just, I got some information from Dr. Watson and C and D. I'm just going to pull those for just a little bit more discussion for C and D under consent agenda of 19.
Okay, so the motion would be in order to approve the agenda with the date correction and the pulling of the two items from the consent agenda. Is that a motion to approve? Deena makes that motion, and it is seconded by Janet. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Thank you. At this time, the motion is in order to approve the minutes as corrected. Ann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did we get the correction in there about the motion?
It is in your packet, their printed packet, about the papers.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I haven't been through all the paperwork yet.
Okay, in that case, is that a motion?
Yes, to approve as a...
As a minute. Is there a second? Melanie seconds the motion. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Thank you. And now, welcome, Commissioner Whitehead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can go over with you some new data, a little bit different way of looking at some data that we find very encouraging and also very instructive. As always, I'll leave you with these slides, but hopefully we can have some good explanation and discussion around it. So, Mr. Chairman, you were talking about maybe misunderstanding or what people know or don't know. So we use this vision statement when I'm out, every time I'm out. So I just want to be clear. You have set the highest academic standards in the nation, not as defined by you, as defined by the National Assessment of Education Progress or NAD. So that's in reading and mathematics in eighth grade. You have set those highest standards. You've set the highest cut scores. You've set the highest goal for graduation in the nation. You've set the highest goal for number of kids that go on to post-secondary in the nation. That's what you have done. That's what Lead the World means. That's very clear. Highest academic, highest graduation rate, achieve highest level post-secondary. The third, or the second part is success. We're going to talk some about that. We are getting better and better and yet don't know everything about what it is that helps. Melanie's children become successful as adults, and Michelle's children become successful as adults. We're getting better at that. More data comes in every day. We will continue to get better over the next several years as we look at students as they go beyond K-12. And then each student. This week, just under a half a million Kansas students will enter a public or private accredited school. That's your responsibility. That is why this board functions for accredited, private, and public schools. And each of those students, Janet, your grandchildren, they're all very different. They all have different needs. Come from the same family. It's amazing. And so you just take three parts of that vision statement. Lead the world. We're going to talk about why did you set those standards so high? What is success even looking like as we get more data? And how do we ensure that then local districts do that with each student? So some of you may remember this gentleman. Started out in a comic strip. This, I believe, those of you that know your movie history, may, I believe that's Christopher Reeves and his depiction of Superman. You know that the original Superman changed in a telephone booth. This was in one of the quick take a photo because we were transitioning out of photo booths, or excuse me, out of telephone booths. But it sounds like, you know, do we need Superman to do this vision? No? Well, or if we do, I'm going to share with you some people that are doing it, that are just doing it. And my guess is that most people in this state will know nothing about the work that they're doing because it just happens every day. So when we say they're going to be successful, you clearly said, look, success has to be defined. So you clearly said, they graduate high school, they go on to post-secondary, they get a certificate, they go in the workforce, and they don't need to be remediated. That's the end goal. That's the end goal. And by the way, Jim McNeese was a longtime high school principal, and one of the things he can tell you that's frustrating is once they graduate high school, you have no control over that data, right? It's all preparatory. You said there are some skill sets that they're going to need to do that. Academic, cognitive, that's the combination of skills. Technical, the ability to put things together and decode. By the way, in September, you're going to hear some static news around that. Employability and civic engagement. So those are the skills. We get hung up on those sometimes. We even want to argue about those. But the overall goal is to get students to have those skills to go on to be successful. So what's the data then tell us? Well, we haven't revisited this in a while, so some of you who've been on the board are going to go, I used to see that all the time. Don't see that so much anymore. Georgetown Policy Institute, through about 2020, kept doing an annual look at the work environment in every state. And they said, Kansas needs 73% of their workers to have some post-secondary certificate or degree. That when you apply for a job in our state, 73% of those jobs require you, we say this all the time, have two pieces of paper, a high school diploma and something else. The interesting part of this, 37% or approximately half of those need to be a bachelor, a master's, PhD, or professional degree, and half of those don't. 36% need to be an associate or certificate. So, Mr. Chair, when you talked about individual plans of study and every kid ought to be honored, that is right there. Half of the students that graduate high school don't need to go on to post-secondary in terms of a college degree, but half of them do.
Excuse me, I just told you we don't have sound on the line. Is that something that we need to pause for? Will this be archived even though it's...
He is recording.
Okay, let's go ahead now.
Okay. So then, let's get into the success. Well, we measure eight different things that currently tells us in combination they make success. Academic, we're going to talk some about that today. High school graduation, we're measuring against 95%. Post-secondary success, we're measuring against 70 to 75%. Commissioners' award takes into account risk factors and equity. And then quality measures that districts collect themselves, social, emotional, kindergarten readiness, and individual plans of study and civic engagement. So the better you get in all eight, the better we tilt the odds of success. Nothing's perfect. We're tilting the odds. So let's take a look. And then, as you know, these are the competencies that we're looking at in combination. Where do these come from? They came from Kansans, but guess what? The U.S. Chamber of Commerce said these are the skill sets young people need to have to be successful. Guess what? The Kansas Chamber of Commerce said these are the skill sets young people in Kansas need to have to be successful. So they come from work. They come from general public, and those are the skill sets in combination. We issue an accountability report for every public and private system that you accredit. This happens to be Southern Line County. I've shown you this before. There's the metric that we always look at, which is that bottom statement is the equity. We predict you to be here, and there's where you're at. Here you can take a look at all eight, starting to look at the eight measures and how are they doing. And here's their academic data, and here's their demographic data, and here's their post-secondary data. We're going to focus a lot on the post-secondary data today. This is, this data is resistant to change, and here's why. We are looking at a five-year average. So next year, the column on the left comes off, and we add a new set of data, and we average the five years. So you can't do anything about the middle data. It stays with you until it eventually drops off. I'm going to come back to that. So it's very, so what Michael Arterbryte and his staff are doing at South Line County is they're looking at this data and saying, what do we need to do in the KISA process to improve ourselves? And you can clearly see where they're stronger or where they're weaker, but they're trying to do better in all eight areas. So let's take a look then at how districts are doing since the time that we started to recognize school districts in these eight areas. So let's go back to 2019. There were 40 school districts recognized in four areas, zero school districts in five areas, zero school districts in six, seven, or eight. Forty in all four, in four of the eight areas, half. 2020, that number became 53. But four districts now being recognized in five areas, and three in six areas, zero and eight. Last year, because we're calculating it for this year, so last year, that number became 64. The number in five areas became seven. The number in six areas became six. The number in all eight areas, it was shared with Hugh South Line County, and you can see that. That's growth in the three years since we started recognizing those school districts. By October, I will share with you 2020 as we add to that. Not lowering any standard, the highest that you set, but trying to get to more student, more school districts that have at least four areas, five areas, or eight. But the question you're going to ask is, okay, but as we look at this data, right, in all eight areas, are we moving the needle on what the State Board said is success, which is I graduate high school and I go on to earn something else, right? We believe by the data we have, meaning research, these areas lead to that. Let's take a look at that. So now, we're going to look at the number of school districts scoring in the last four years, 70% and above post-secondary effective. What does that mean? That means, Michelle, that Springville, for example, would start students as a freshman, and two years out of high school, 70% of those students would have graduated and earned a certificate, earned an associate degree, earned a bachelor, or they are still in school pursuing that on time. That's what it means. Let's look in 2019. You can see, this is the number of school districts that are at 70% or above, which is the number that Georgetown says is necessary to run our economy. We were at eight, dropped to seven, went to 10, went to 14. Somewhere between a 40 and a 50% growth over that time. The next level that we measure are those districts hitting 60% or above. Call that silver. Pretty high, all right? Not where we want to be yet, but pretty high. What's happened over the four years there? I know some of you maybe aren't like data geeks, but like I am. Sometimes when you think about 490,000 Kansas kids, and then you start to look at, this is changing the lives of kids. We've gone from, just add these two together. We've gone from 31 districts in 2019, getting 60% above of their kids graduated, and on to something else. This past year, that number was 77. Now, who did that? Local school districts did that work. Who set the policy to do that? You did. Who held them accountable through a KISA process? You did. They did the work. So now let's take a look at how the data that you set academically and post-secondary come together. Level one, two, three, and four, is anything more discussed in Kansas than those three data points, kids scoring in level one on a state assessment? You're going to be talking about cut scores in just a few minutes. So what we took a look at, Shawnee Mission did a study, I've shared some of those results with you. We did a random sample, stratified sample across the state of kids that took 10th grade state assessment and where they were two years out of high school. So let's look at level one, level two, level three, level four. These are academic levels and how they go on to graduate high school. So this is part of the analysis now that you'll start to look at. 79.7% of Kansas students that scored in level one went on to graduate. 97% of level four went on to graduate high school. This is language arts. This is how they did in language arts. So we know that the biggest jump in graduation happens from level one to level two. See, that's 10% different. There's a jump from two to three and a little bit of jump from three to four. This is language arts. Math is a stronger predictor. There's math. Here's how they did in math. So there you see, so that 80% of kids that scored level one in math did graduate high school. 96% of kids that scored in mathematics in level three graduated high school. But that's just graduating high school. That's the first part of that equation. Did they go on? Let's look at language arts. I scored level one in language arts. Did I go on to earn a certificate? Did I go on to an associate degree? Did I go on to a bachelor? There's your numbers. 20% becomes 44, becomes 68, becomes 79. How about mathematics? Again, a little bit stronger predictor. Now you're looking, I said, this chart has so much to unpack. First of all, where did you set the targets for school districts to obtain? Right there. Right there. You set it to be at 70% post-secondary. That's right in the middle of those two. You set at 95% graduation, and you said kids should be at performance of level three, the academic level. That's what you set for school districts to go obtain. Now, let's look at this. If academics were the only thing that would lead you to that post-secondary success, you would probably have some kids, 1% to 5% of kids that scored in level one would go on just because of chance, right? Luck. And you would probably have some number of 1% to 5% at the top end that wouldn't make it, again, for the same reasons, right? How do you end up with basically 22% of level one kids that go on? Because they have some other skill sets that compensate for their lack of academic. And why at the top end do you have 80% of level four kids, meaning 20%, don't go on? Because they lack something. So what we know is academics absolutely matter, and they matter especially getting from 1% to 2% and 2% to 3%. And there's other skill sets that matter also. This chart is just new data for us, but it's really instructive because guess what? It's Kansas data. It's not national data. It's Kansas data. So what do we know, again? Keys, know your eight outcomes. When you talk to your local boards that you represent, how are you doing in each of those eight outcomes? What is your process and your plan to execute to get better in those eight areas? Because they will drive then that success and then measure against those outcomes. So if that didn't make you get a little teary-eyed, I'm going to share with you one school district, and I'm going to come back really quick because remember, I'm going to come back to this chart here. These are school districts that scored 60% above, that's the silver line, or 70% above, that's the gold line, 60 or 70. I'm going to share a school district that isn't in that category. Some people would call them a failing school district because they're not in that category, all right? I don't call them that. I call them a huge success getting better. So let me share with you that school district. Now remember, I'm going to be sharing with you a five-year average. I'm looking at that chart. We're going, every year, going to drop one off. It's resistant to change. This is Dodge City, USD 443, in the heart of Jean's territory. I want to just ask you this. Write down this number. Write down the number that you know. Two numbers. What's the student population in Dodge City? And what's the percent of white students they have? And then I'll share that. You don't have to share it. Just write it down for yourself. How many students are in Dodge City? And what's the percent of white students in Dodge City? Do you have that? Dodge City has just under 7,000 students. 6,930 students last year attended Dodge City USD 443. 16% of those students are white. 80% of those students are Hispanic, 2% are African-American, 3% are classified as other, that would be a multiracial, Asian, Native American, et cetera. Do you get the demographics? That looks very different than some other school districts in our state. And guess what? Their post-secondary effective rate's not at 60 or 70%. So I'm going to go take you back to the year 2015. That's the first year we internally started hitting the data. We didn't start releasing it until '17. The chart you see above is '17. We had it internally because we were looking at it, trying to make sense of it. So in '15, do you know what years we were talking about with kids? 2009 to 2013. Remember, it's always two years in a year. You ready? Dodge City in 2015, that five-year average, just like that chart, that five-year average was 21.4. 21.4% of the kids graduated high school and went on to earn something else. Your goal, 70%. One year later, 22.2. The chart you see up in the top left, 23.2. Remember, five-year average, not one, we're looking at that year, 2018, 27.3. That became 29.5. That became 33.1. That became 34.8, and that became 40.4. They're not going to get recognized because they're not 60, 70%. You see the 7,000 kids in Dodge City. Most of them do not speak English as their first language, and they've just increased 89% over that eight-year period. Remarkable. And do they have work yet to do? Yes. Yes. Remarkable work. It's hard work. It's unnoticed work. It's spending time, Dr. Dirksen and Dr. Springsteen, spending time bringing people in and talking about literacy and how we're going to deliver literacy in Dodge City, how we're going to deliver mathematics, how we're going to help young people understand what their future can be. I'm going to share with you over the next several months, success stories that you're not going to see when we pass out awards similar to Dodge City. Where hard work is going on, and we're making terrific gains around the areas, and yet they would all tell you, we have so much work yet to do. So kudos to Fred Dirksen and everyone in Dodge City USD 443. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to stand for questions.
Thank you. Betty.
Thank you and thank you, Commissioner. I speak of this often, so today won't be an exception because my concern focuses on public perception, business perception. When we isolate and take a look overall, the data is showing one thing, the belief is totally different. Now, my point is I would love to see some focus on if we are making these inroads, then there has to be a better way of messaging success. Otherwise, it does not make sense when I see, constantly see commercials that are saying, take your kids out of public schools. We can do this better. And I hear parents saying there's such a disconnect. There is a messaging problem and I am not trying to negate anything. I think it's outstanding that we've, inroads have been made. My concern is how do you format this information to put it in a perspective where the public sees the same thing? Even legislature, say, Kansas schools are failing. We have many organizations, Kansas schools are failing. We have data that says they're not. And it's that disconnect that I really would love to see a plan of action if possible, some kind of focus where this message is being received, not just at a state board meeting to state board members, but where the public, the business world, and even from a standpoint of post-secondary, we're not doing what we should be doing. That's a huge concern and I really would love to see us discuss that a little more. Thank you.
So I'll just point out, again, go back to your vision. Lead the world. You set the success at this measure at 70%. 60 and 70% is getting really close to that. I shared with you that chart. So the question becomes, is this school district failing? On that measure, the answer would be yes, that they're not because they're moving toward that goal. It doesn't happen overnight. They're moving towards, so it comes back to messaging, right? Let's tell the story that they moved from 20% to 40% over that time. They're making the gains that we want to see. They're not at the place we want them to be yet, but they're doing the things internally that are yielding the results that we want to see.
Then is it, if I, then is it possible to broaden the, what we are acknowledging? If as an example, you look at the progress that Dodge City has made, they're not being acknowledged because they're not at this level, but they're on their way. So maybe to acknowledge more, to celebrate more, to talk more about those districts that are on their way. Again, I'm not trying to script the message. I am saying that I do believe we need a better message. Otherwise, the disconnect is going to grow, it's going to get even bigger between families, communities, business world, everyone else, and then there's education on this side and the rest of the world on the other. I don't have a magic answer. If I did, I'd share that microphone with you. I don't. I'm saying this is something we really need to focus on.
Thinking maybe, Betty, you, me, and Michelle will do a new TikTok. Seems to be the way in which most, no. I'm just saying maybe TikTok, no. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, and Betty, that's exactly the point I was making this morning. We do not message well. And so that's, we're actually going to start that conversation during the chair's report, whenever that comes up during this meeting, but that'll just be the beginning of that discussion because you're absolutely right. Message is important and what is perceived and what in reality is not always the same.
Anne. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know if you read online about the Star Awards, it says that KISA supports them. They, they work together. I just want to make sure that we're not pitting KISA against the Star Awards because I know you can have a Star Award still be conditionally accredited because that's a snapshot and doesn't really reflect growth. So how do we reconcile that? Because Star Awards are not a replacement for KISA. That's, I mean, that's continuous growth and the Star Award is a snapshot.
So it's a combination, Anne. So it's, KISA is measuring, sorry, is measuring, let's go back to that one, is measuring those eight outcomes and then the process, the execution against that. So it's looking at, are you, do you have a process to achieve it? Are you achieving it? The answer is no, you're not at all. What's your progress toward that? That's the KISA process, I mean, in a nutshell.
I know, I know one administrator said, well, do you want me to do Star or do you want me to do KISA?
Star is just recognizing those eight areas that are the outcomes that you have said make up success. So they just recognize that. That's all it is.
Is it possible they could, like, I could do something to get a Star Award this year and get that recognition, but it doesn't help. It's not continuous improvement. Does that make sense?
Well, if you're, if you do that work, like individual plan and study, we know that a good, robust individual plans a study help increase post-secondary effectiveness. And we lay out that rubric. So I would say if you do that rubric and you're recognized in that area, you are doing the work for that. That's the recognition of that.
Okay. And this, is this something the art looks at as well?
Yes.
Thank you, Ben. Is that just for my colleague next to me or thing isn't working properly? Okay.
I just wanted to thank Dodge City and the efforts that went into that improvement. I think that really shows the efforts of so many teachers and administrators and a lot of school personnel in that area. I also was wondering, that seems to be representative of a lot of districts, that their efforts are, are improving their schools and doing good things for their students. So I think we're going to see more of that. I did want to ask what you believed might be the effect of the pandemic? Do you think it depressed some of these numbers in the intervening years or?
Yes. Yeah. And that'll start to show up post-secondary in the next couple of years. It certainly suppressed academic, which happened immediately. We're going to see a little bit of a drop in those, in those outlined years or at least, but again, the five-year average may help, you know, stabilize that. So we had our first statewide Zoom with administrators and I was in Ulysses, something making my way back to Topeka. So I stopped in Dodge really to just kind of, I need to do the Zoom. I need a place to do it. And so I shared this information with Fred. He was also sharing with me an ROTC program that they just started a few years ago and the number of students now going through that, that are, it's making a difference in students graduating. And, you know, when, so you look at this and it's just a bunch of data points online. But he was thinking through all the kids, 7,000 kids, and you went from 20% of those kids to 40% of those kids. And all those kids then who had changed that trajectory. And, you know, honestly, Fred and I have been doing this a long time and we, we both had tears in our eyes because this is the hard work of the Dodge City community. School people, yes, but the families and everyone in Dodge City. And I'm going to share with you other examples throughout the next several months.
Well, thank you very much. Are there other, I have two cards for open forum. Are there others?
I've got one more.
I now declare the citizens' open forum of the Kansas State Board of Education meeting open at 10:40 a.m. The state board provides this opportunity for citizens to share views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the state board. The state board asks that the speakers identify themselves by name and the name of the group they represent, if applicable. The state board also asks each speaker to focus their remarks on issues or topics. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. Any more questions will be for clarification. Our first speaker is Becky Becker. Our second speaker is Dr. Schrock. And our third speaker is Samantha, and help me with your last name, Samantha.
Lefave.
Lefave, okay, thank you. Becky Becker.
Thank you all. I emailed a letter to you this morning that has the meat of what I need to visit with you about because I knew I had three minutes to visit with you all. I'm coming as a stakeholder instead of an educator, which I contacted you prior to. And this is a grandmother, a great-grandmother, an aunt, a great-aunt. And I've had the pleasure of being able to teach a lot of my relation. I've had them in class. I am very passionate when it comes to this issue of the graduation credit for art. As you will see in materials that I have provided you, all the wonderful programs that you all in the department put in play for our kids, be it CTE, be it, you know, all these other things, art is involved in every one of them. Art, the skills that I teach or taught my own children and grandchildren and how passionate I am about their success is involved in all those things. And I hope that in you all and your powers that be, that you have the capacity to look at something, be it putting it in a different place, like in some states, they have art is under the CTE umbrella, but it overlaps. It overlaps with all these different things. KISA, CTE, all the other 21st century skills, all these things. And so I had a student tell me, he was a high school boy, and he said, you know, I wouldn't be here. And it's in Manhattan. He said, I wouldn't be here if I didn't have art class. He said, I, I have friends who have cut out, dropped out, whatever. They go get their GED or whatever, but I like coming here. I like photography, blah, blah, blah. And so anyway, he said, but art is hard. It's fun, but it's hard. I said, there you go. You're learning skills. You're learning how to problem solve and different things. So we went down through the skills and we used to call art being in the humanities because we're human, because this is how we communicate, how we learn skills for life and all these other things. And he said, I'll tell you what it is. He said, art's different because we're different. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I always cringe whenever I walk in the room and Dr. Schrock has a towel on his. I know that we're going to have the benefit of his knowledge and experience. Welcome, Dr. Schrock.
Thank you, sir. That's a compliment. Okay. On the top sheet, the green sheet, you will see the number of individual biology teachers that have one, two, three, four, five, or six preps in their school day. When the school, number of students is zero to 49, none of them have just one or two. They're teaching a variety of classes, usually five or six. And there's no way. They oftentimes, these are the little schools, one, K through 12 in one building, and they're teaching a bit of school science and chemistry and they are not certified by today licensed most fields. If you turn to the, if you look down at the bottom, and you'll, you'll see that the large schools never have five or six preps. Teachers have one, two, or three at most. We go to the yellow sheet and this is a graph, number of high school graduates is in, well, number of students is in gray in the background and the individual school districts are the little white bars. And with the gray in the background indicating the number of students, you'll see that back in 1990, 303 school districts, 18 of them got only zero to 10 students graduating. And as you go up, you'll see a larger number of students by far are in the larger schools. You go to the blue sheet, you'll see the change that occurred between 1990 and after school consolidation. We had a surge of it back to 286 where it now has stayed for a long time. And you'll see that it dropped down from 18 down to 10 that were in that low category and the ones that were in the 11 to 25 high school graduates, it goes down, but then otherwise going across the board. It is still a problem. In other words, we all have a lot of schools, little schools, that do not have qualified teachers in the classroom, not just science, but also all the other fields. One in particular, I can think of, has 66, no third grade. The number of high school classes there, two, three, four in the class. Anyway, that, and this certification warrant today licensure, they are not qualified. Superman is a good teacher, not a file paper data. And consolidation needs to continue. The state never consolidated and argued about another dozen very well. Consolidating the USDs to hub at a large high school, just hub to the high school, would pull a lot of these teachers from the super small high schools that aren't qualified but are teaching outside of their field as well. So that you had classes of 24 to 30 that were getting a good teacher. We need to see that continue. Okay? Before 1990 QPA and No Child Left Behind, the super tines principals got together and said, trust us and get rid of all this. We have two years and then we are unaccredited if we don't have a qualified teacher. And get rid of that because we now have all this paperwork. Okay? And we did. If you return to that, you would begin to see the consolidation needs to occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schrock. You always give us something interesting to think of that.
Thank you.
Samantha. Welcome to the state board.
Hi. Good morning. And so my name is Samantha Lefave. I'm from Lakeview. I have a son that attends school there and I attended a lot of the schools from fourth grade on myself. So it is a pleasure to speak to you this morning and thank you for all that you do. I'm here to present a petition to you. It has been signed by 661 Kansans from across the state. As you probably already know, Kansas school boards are not required to hear public comment as part of their regular Board of Education meetings. This is inconsistent with our state constitution and so we feel that it's a problem. It needs to change and we're asking for your help in making that happen. In addition to the petition itself, you'll see some of the petition signers' comments, a quick research document that I put together. I looked at 25 of the largest districts in our state and, and I've kind of summarized for you what I found, how they are handling public engagement. So hopefully that will kind of give you a better picture of how this particular issue is affecting the different districts in our state. And in the very back is just. And in the very back is just some additional information from me on what my experience has been in Olathe. So I did want to just read one comment to you. This is from Holly Palacio of Olathe. She says, "It is only in the public square that a citizen could know absolutely that they had the attention of the elected official in hearing their grievance. As elected representatives, they are sworn to uphold our constitution, both state and federal, and preventing free speech is a violation of both documents. At the heart of the matter, that is the issue, compelling an elected body to protect free speech." I just want you to know that a lot of thought and hard work and even prayer has gone into this petition and this presentation, and I believe that what Holly said is true, and I really hope that we've done a good job of showing you all just how valuable the public comments and having a record of those comments is, and how desperately so many parents in this state need your help with this matter. So thank you again for all that you do, and enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you very much. Now you noticed that you can't talk to us.
Yes. Yes. And I will say, it's been a very eye-opening experience just getting more involved in Olathe and getting to know our school board members. I feel that that's been a blessing to my family, and I just, I hope that more people will get involved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The state board citizens' open forum is closed at 10:51. We would like to thank the speakers for sharing their views. The state board will determine if any of these issues should be addressed as future agenda items, and we will discuss that, future agenda items later in our agenda.
At this time, I recognize our representatives from ESER 2 and 3. Is that going to be Doug? Yes, welcome Doug.
Thank you, Chairman Porter, members of the board. This month's ESER 2 and the ESER 3 review.
Okay.
Maybe? This month, we have nine districts that have submitted changes. With those changes, that'll bring their total plans up to $52 million. The changes represent approximately $1 million in addition to what's already been approved by you all. The districts that we have this month for ESER 2 changes, Fairfield and Perry, those are just no net change, just moving funds around. Fairfield is curriculum for Perry at salary. Marysville is using up the rest of their allocation, and that goes for salaries and software. Moving to La Crosse, that's using up some more of their allocation, but still not all of it, but that's going to curriculum and salaries. Great Bend will use up the rest of theirs for premium pay and summer school. And then Baser-Linwood is still going to have some money left, but they're using some for salaries. Then we go to Fort Larded. That uses up the rest of their allocation. That's for premium pay. Kansas City's moving money around for summer school and salaries, and then Shawnee Mission for some nursing, for nurses. And so like I said, that brings the changes to almost $1 million. As we look at our cumulative, we're still sitting at about 75% for that teaching and learning as we add that $1 million in. We've done some recalculations on our numbers, and we are down to $22 million worth of ESER 2 funds that have not been spoken for. So we're making a pretty good dent in that. We've still got about 13 months, I guess, at this point for those funds to be encumbered, and then they need to be spent by December of '23.
Any ESER 2 questions? Seeing none, let's move forward.
Did you want to vote separate on two, or you want?
Yeah, let's go ahead. If there are, Ben? Is that for you or Gene?
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education accept the recommendations of the Commissioner's Task Force on ESER distribution of money and approve the public school district for the ESER 2 change request as presented for use of federal COVID-19 relief funds.
Is there a second to that motion? Jim McNeese seconds that motion. Further discussion? Not all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Abstain? 9-0-1. Thank you. Let's go ahead.
Okay, now picking up with ESER 3, we have, still have a few of the districts that were conditionally approved back in February. We're clearing Nest City at this time. They've met all the requirements, and so will release their funds. In this packet today, or the slate today, we've got 16 new districts that have submitted ESER 3 funds. That's for a total of $71.7 million. We do have a couple of ineligible that we'll talk about here in a minute. If those were included, it would be 72 million. And then we've got 10 districts that have submitted changes for ESER 3, bringing their totals to 9.8 million, and almost $800,000 in net changes. As you look at where we're at, you all have approved 102 plans. We've got eight that are still conditionally approved, 16 new ones today, 34 that are currently under review, and we actually moved 12 of those. Will go to Task Force. We know we did those yesterday morning, so we can knock 12 out of that 34. So that brings us down to 22 that are still under review, and we've got 126 that have not been submitted. Just the demographics of the districts that we're looking at, you know, half of them are using most of their money up in this submission, kind of spread out. We've got a few bigger districts this time. As we look at it, they had $89 million at their disposal. The plans represent 71.7. Like I said, we've got $400,000 in ineligible that we'll talk about. Ranges per district, the low end on there, the $167,000 is Lewis. The high end is Topeka at $40 million. Per pupil spending, that's Shawnee Mission at the low end, and then Topeka at the high end, the 33, 29 per student. Looking at the allowable uses, this batch represents about 84% is going towards that teaching and learning. The two ineligible that we looked at, the first one is for basically a new intercom system for all the buildings in the district, based on the way this was presented to us. If we were talking about a small group of students that were deaf or hard of hearing, it would make sense to have this, or to at least acknowledge that and provide some technology to help them here. But as far as a mass undertaking for all buildings, we didn't feel that that was reasonable. And then the second one is basically a security system that we have consistently voted down that we don't see the tie to COVID. The main emphasis of this one seemed to be to be able to detect vapors, or students who were vaping, and that really has no COVID tie to it at all. So what these systems can do and how they tie to COVID, we don't see the connection. So we've deemed those two ineligible. So as you look at the cumulative, 171 million approved, 71 million today. That puts us at 74% for teaching and learning, leaving us with 525 million worth of ESER 3 funds that need to be encumbered by September of 2024, and then liquidated by December
I will say that the ESER Task Force, and Janet's also a member of that, we are looking for ways to approve. And whenever these two ineligible were presented, we couldn't find that. So, you know, we agreed with the recommendations because we are predisposed to try to get as much money in schools as possible, but we agreed that those did not fit the definition. And we also know that we're going to be scrutinized very carefully, and we want to make sure that we are following both the letter and the spirit of the law as it is presented to us. Anything else?
I, that scrutiny piece, I don't know if I've mentioned this before or not, but we did get notice from the Department of Education the other day, and they have started pulling some auditing from districts. So we were requested to provide everything that had been drawn down from us on a certain date, and then there was approximately 100 districts that got the same notice from the feds saying, you drew down these funds, now tell us exactly what you used them for. So we know that that's starting now. ESER 3 changes, Union Town using up a little bit more of their allocation, not quite all of it. Smith Center for an HVAC project, North Ottawa for JAG, and Summer School just moving some funds around. Wesken moving funds around for the purchase of some textbooks. Gerard using up a little bit more of theirs for salaries. Valley Center moving funds around for salaries. Ottawa, they still have quite a bit of money left, but this is going for salaries. Fairfield, this uses up the rest of theirs. It's for some curriculum. Phillipsburg uses up the rest of theirs. That goes towards salaries and textbooks. And Burlingame is using up the rest of theirs, and that's going for salaries. And so a net change of almost $800,000. And as we look at our cumulative, we're still sitting at about 80% for all of our ESER 3
Any questions now? Seeing none? Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Thank you, Chairman Porter. With regard to, oh, can you go back a slide? I was just going to ask a question about premium pay and salaries. So can you remind us real quick, there's a big difference between ESER 2 and ESER 3 when it comes to premium pay and salaries, correct?
No.
No, there's not? Okay, because I noticed that the percentage of premium pay versus learning loss seems to flip flop between ESER 2 and ESER 3, but the question was more about salaries, we're seeing salaries more and more in those later slides?
I think when we put down salaries, it is more for retention and pay and premium pay, those types of things, because you really shouldn't be using these funds to pay someone's salary because they disappear in two years. So unless you want to start laying people off in two years, this money really shouldn't be used for that kind of salary.
Summer school and that type of stuff.
Yeah.
And that's kind of the, the rest of my question was around, are we seeing that money go to premium pay as a retention, or is it paying for brand-new teachers' summer school? Do we have a feeling for how that's getting divided up?
I would say a lot of it's probably going towards retention, just maintaining the staff that you have. And I'm sorry, what was the rest or the other option?
What I'm trying to get at is the retention piece, and I'd love to see some data points on the other side of this, where we're able to point back to these dollars spent and figure out, yes or no, did this help us retain teachers? We know that we've got a teacher shortage, so I'd just like to kind of connect some of those data points and get a feel for, is this helping with our teacher shortage?
Yeah, I don't know if we can tie those together with what we have or not.
We could possibly do that, Melanie, by getting our licensure department to kind of work with the ESER team and try to connect those dots as people either leave or don't leave, because we survey from the licensure standpoint, you know, in terms of leaving. So I think we could get close. I'm not sure we'd be an exact match, but we could get some data for you.
Thanks. I just think it's something we're following. Thank you, Chairman Porter.
Thank you. And Ben?
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education accept the recommendations of the Commissioner's Task Force on ESER distribution of money and approve the public school district requests for ESER 3 expenditure plans and ESER 3 change requests as presented for use of federal COVID-19 relief funds.
Is there a second to that motion? Jim McNeese seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Abstain? 9-0-1. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We do have a quorum, so let's go and get started. Beth, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Porter, state board members, commissioner, for allowing us the opportunity to be on the agenda again today. My name is Beth Foltz, and I'm currently serving as the In Arm Director for the Career Standards and Assessment Services Team. Just as a brief review from last month, both the state and federal law require KSDE to administer standards-based assessments in ELA and math to all students in grades 3 through 8 and once in high school. Additionally, Kansas law requires a review of academic standards at least every seven years. Both the ELA and math standards were last reviewed during the 2016-17 school year. Math revisions were adopted by the state board in August of 2017, and the ELA revisions were adopted that November. In ELA and math, grades 3 through 8, the standards review and revisions were determined to be minimal, and changes to the assessments were not required. However, the grade 10 math standards changed significantly, and psychometricians at both AAI at the University of Kansas and the Kansas Technical Advisory Committee determined the 2015 grade 10 math assessment no longer met the standards assessment alignment. Work began immediately the fall of 2017 to develop new grade 10 math assessment. The original plan was to administer that assessment spring of 2020, but unfortunately, because of the pandemic interruption, we were not able to administer the new grade 10 math assessment until spring of 2022. Today is almost the last step in this process that started back in 2017. Today, you get to vote on the recommended cut points for the performance levels for the grade 10 math assessment. Once these cut points between the performance levels are set and approved by you, AAI at the University of Kansas will produce the individual student score reports and send the performance level data to KSDE, so we can then finish the steps necessary to release state assessment results to you and the public. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Neil Kingston, distinguished professor at the University of Kansas and director of the Achievement and Assessment Institute, and Dr. Brooke Nash, associate director for psychometrics at Accessible Teaching, Learning, and Assessment Systems at KU, and the lead psychometrician for the Kansas assessments. They will provide you a brief review of the process that Dr. Kingston shared last month on how a group of Kansas high school math teachers reached their recommendations on performance levels and cut scores for the new grade 10 math assessment. They will also answer any questions you might have relating to the standard-setting process and the recommendation.
And welcome.
Thank you, everyone. Commissioner Watson, Chair Porter, members of the board, it's my pleasure to be here You just heard sort of the history of what got us here, so I won't go over that part again, but I will remember to try to change slides. I do want to tell you a little bit more about the process because it is a complex one, and standard setting is an art that is done by relatively few people, yet very important to policymakers at state departments of education and throughout the state and anyone who works with tests. So as previously stated, the tests were aligned to the 2017 Kansas standards for mathematics. There are 56 items. There are 56 items that are administered in two test sessions. We used a method called the bookmark method to do our standard-setting. We trained panelists to recommend three cut scores, and as you can see from the display over here, those three cut scores divide the whole range of scores into four groups: those who score below the Level 1-2 cut score, those who score between that and the Level 2-3 cut score, those that are between the Level 3 and Level 4 test cut score, and those above the Level 4 cut score. These levels have policy performance-level descriptors that start off the process and that were previously approved by the State Board. Level 1 indicates a student who has limited ability to understand and use the skills and knowledge needed for post-secondary readiness. As I mentioned last time, that wording right there starts setting the rigor of the standards that are implemented by choice, by intention. We're not just looking at standards that talk about where you are now, they are reaching out to where you will be at the end of your education process, your K-12 education process, post-secondary readiness. Level 2 requires a basic ability to understand and use the skills and knowledge needed for post-secondary readiness. Level 3, that increases to an effective ability to understand and use the skills and knowledge needed for post-secondary readiness. And then finally, Level 4, excellent ability to understand and use the skills and knowledge needed for post-secondary readiness. Test items were presented to 12 panelists that represented the various parts of the state and the demographics of the state, and they received these in an ordered booklet from the easiest to the hardest item, and they would start going through the items one by one individually until they got to the point where they could identify the first item for which about 2/3 of the borderline students would likely not answer correctly. That is, we're looking for the people that are right at the cut from one area to the Once they have identified those, they confer with each other, and some might say, "Well, I think you were a little too easy or a little too hard, here's why I have chosen the number that I think is the right number." After that discussion, there's a second round where they get a chance to independently rate again, then results are shared again. There are usually some small changes that come out of that round. Finally, the participants are provided a comparison of the percent of students in each category with the results from other grades of testing, grades 4 and 8, for example, and they have another chance to modify their judgments. That last part is called the articulation process, to make sure that there is coherence between the standards at one grade and the standards at other grades. There were no changes that came out of that articulation process. That also is not uncommon, but it is an important step in the process, because occasionally you will run into a case where there was someone with a very strong opinion, different than everyone else on the panel, and their outlying vote would sway the numbers significantly. All this led to this distribution of scores. In the last column there, that is what would come from applying the cut scores that we described in the past, the last meeting, to the 2022 data. As a reminder, the score scale, the range of scores, is from 220 to 380, and the scale score cut points that are recommended coming out of this process were 273 for the lowest cut, 300 for the next cut, and 329 for the last cut.
Go over that again, please.
So, the recommended cut scores are 273, I'm on the wrong slide to show that, for the lowest cut, if you remember, there are three cuts to create four categories, 273, which would be the lowest score to be assigned to Level 2, 300, and then 329.
And the range again is...
And the range goes from 220 to 380.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So, in this impact data that you're seeing here, you'll note that the percents are almost identical in 2022 in each category as they were in 2021. I believe there's no more than a 1% difference in any one of the categories. That was not something built into the process, that was something that the rigor of the process, as opposed to the rigor of the standards, led to the similar conclusion as applying that same process in previous standard-setting led to. There it is. The panelists provided us feedback about the process. The vast majority of panelists said that the recommended cut scores were reasonable, appropriate, and defensible. The vast majority of panelists said that the standard procedures were effective, and no changes, as I mentioned before, were made during the articulation process. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Betty.
Okay, thank you. This is kind of a clarification question, because as we've discussed in the past, this is a matter that is very challenging for the average person to just wrap their mind around and understand. So, I am actually looking at the use of post-secondary readiness for post-secondary. When we've acknowledged that a significant number of our students, or roughly 40%, I believe, was stated that won't go on to college, will begin their career right out of high school, and actually can have a successful career. Again, a percentage of those going on to two-year schools. My concern is if we are measuring post-secondary success, how does that bring in to play those students that have no intention of going to college, just going straight into a career?
Post-secondary readiness typically means, and I'll let anyone from the department who wants to add on to this, typically means any of a variety of post-secondary pathways, not just college. I agree with what you just implied, we can't just be thinking of the college-bound population, that would be leaving behind many of our students from the productive future we want for them. And so, military is another option, direct entry to the job market is another option. Unfortunately, in some communities, there's yet another, none of those things that occurs for a substantial or some percent of the students, those are the ones who are not post-secondary ready, none of these options were for them.
So, is there a, this has been my message of the day, which is messaging, is there a, perhaps a more effective way that that can be communicated rather than post-secondary? Again, my concern is having the public at large, and many people understand this process. So, I get kind of concerned about the message, how it could be received, and I asked you the question, you just offered me clarification, there are a lot of people who aren't in positions to ask some, an expert this question, and so, they go on their assumptions, what this means to them. Is there not a, perhaps a more effective way we could communicate that?
So, there's always a more effective way, we can always work, I believe in continuous improvement models, we can always do better tomorrow than we did today, and we have to always have our minds open to how we will do better tomorrow. So, since the last meeting and some of the discussion we have, I have been thinking about some ways that we can help support the department in doing better with the messages that we have. I also have some personal opinions, sometimes the past hangs on a little longer than it should, some, not state-dependent language, but frankly, federal language about college and career readiness, made it sound like the, to my ears, made it sound like the goal for everyone is college, it's number one, college and career. Whereas, I think what we need to be aiming for, again, personal opinion here, but what we need to be aiming for is productive careers and citizenship, and college is one useful pathway, but not the only useful pathway to get there, let's not confuse the means with the ends.
I absolutely love that, and let me add one final piece to that, because typically when in the community, there's the perception, this is a, and I've heard a lot of superintendents say this as well, this is a snapshot, one particular day which may not reflect where students are, you take this test, it basically is telling you where you are that day, not just overall, which lends itself to maybe more frequent screeners being put in place. But going back to that, how would you respond to the validity of assessments when you hear the message, it's just a snapshot of one day?
So, one, it's true. It doesn't invalidate that on that day, this is what we saw, but it doesn't tell the whole story, and in fact, leaves out a large part of the story. One of the things that I love about what the department has been doing in Kansas, and that I think more states ought to be doing, is giving greater emphasis to other aspects of assessment systems, to interim assessment, to benchmark assessment, to what are called balanced assessment systems. The use of summative assessments and accountability is required, as Beth said before, is required by federal and state law, so I'm not saying we don't do that, but this gets back to your point about messaging, messaging. We need to make sure that the messaging gives a more full picture of what is going on.
So, finally, when you hear statements that all of the schools are failing, which, and I'm concerned more about how people believe, because if you get to a point where you don't believe in public education, then there's a disconnect, and the support tends to wand. I believe in public education, and there's a significant value, so certainly, I would love to look at ways where we have that public support. So, when we, when I see things where, based on your scores, and when I say your, it's a public saying that, the assessments, the schools are failing, our students, how would you respond to that?
I've been in this field a long time. I remember before we moved to standards-based testing and used norm-reference testing, and the public believed that even though there was a middlemost score, everyone should score above that middlemost score. Well, you can't do that, the definition of middlemost means half of the people are going to be below that. We have similar problems with standards-based. For multiple reasons, we expect there to be a diversity of mastery of the various competencies that are taught in the schools. It's easy as a professor for me to talk about, "Oh, I want to see more personalized learning, and I want to see more competency-based proof of that learning that goes on," but in large public systems, it's very challenging to make inroads in what we've done for a long time. So, I don't, once again, I unfortunately say this too often, when I, the few times I come in front of you, and if you had me more frequently, I'd probably still be saying the same things, I don't have the answer to this problem. I recognize this communication problem has been going on for the 44 years I've been in this field, and I'm pretty sure has been going on for a lot longer than that. We need to, continuous improvement, we need to keep thinking about how to do a better job tomorrow than we did today. I loved Commissioner Watson, the story you were telling about Garden City before, numbers have to be weaved into stories, because we, as human beings, relate to stories more than we relate to numbers. The numbers are important because they add some objectivity, but the story is what's going to help the public understand.
Thank you.
Dina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'm sort of on the same wavelength, I believe, as Betty is, and maybe my focus is a little more specific, but when I, as a liaison to the legislature, am always being, it's always been pointed out to me that the assessments are, the majority are below where we want them to be, so therefore, they're failing. They look at basic and the first group, 1 and 2, if you're in those two groups, you're failing. So, my question of you, is there something that's come down from the federal government that tells us we have to use four different groupings, or was that something we chose? And is there a way for us to say that grade level is really in these, between these two scores?
My memory is that it was a choice that was made to move to four categories from previous five categories, and that to some extent, that choice was made to differentiate from the earlier system, so people would not confuse the two, because at the same time, new more rigorous standards were put in place, and often, when you're making changes to any kind of program, you don't want to make the results look too similar to previous programs, because that'll maximize the confusion that goes on. So, that's why I think it happened, and my memory of the federal legislation, but I think there are probably people here who will have a better memory of it, is that we had the choice of four or five categories. It used to be, once upon a time, there were more choices, but I believe under current federal legislation, does anyone, yeah, okay.
Well, my concern is that everyone that's talking about this from a legislative point of view is speaking of the lower 1 and 2 as being below grade level, and... And I, my concern is that grade level is probably part of two and part of three. So, to, to me, there's a disconnect in the way we're messaging. And it may be the terms that we, that we've assigned, saying it's basic, for example. And the other one is, I've forgotten exactly what that term is. But it, it may be, it's like there's no C. There's a D and F. And there's a, a B and A and B. And we've left out the middle part. So that's where I think our disconnect with the folks across the street, which I think is probably happening with, within the general public, too. They, they're used to a five category. And when we remove one of them, we've removed our ability to communicate in the manner that most folks understand. So that's, my question is, how can we use this format and help the general public understand that two, one and two do not mean that kids are failing?
One, that's absolutely true, of course. One and two do not mean kids are failing. As one thinks back and when I was talking about, the concept of grade level is confusing in and of itself. What does it mean to be on grade level? Back in the days of norm reference tests, it was that middlemost part. And so if you look at any of these over here, what you were saying before, between two and three, yeah, these 37% are below the average. The average is around right here, 50th percentile, in the middle of that range. And the department, I believe, has used language talking about that second, that, that second from the bottom category is not bad. That's not failing. That's, but I also have had the experience of having people try to compare performance levels with grades. And they are set up with such different intentions. No one, I, I hope we have no schools, I don't believe we have any schools where it's the case, where even if we looked at the bottom category, we'd say, oh yeah, 45% of the kids should be failing. No, that is not the state of, of, of education in, in the state. That's the whole state together, 45% in that category. It doesn't mean F. It, it, it is trying to come up with some meaningful goals. I don't want to take up too much of your time. This is a topic I could talk about for days.
Please don't.
It may be about my grade level, too.
So, some of it is fairly basic ideas. But I won't go into more of that now, because I don't think it'll help you. It helps me to hear you say that, so that I can think about how best to work with you in the, in the future.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm coming from. That it will be helpful if we could have some interpretation to share. And maybe I'll put you in contact with the chairs. And you can explain to the representatives and senators who said on the education committee that, that they're misinterpreting what those scores mean. Thank you.
Okay, and we're going to have to move on. But I'm going to, there are two, two other questions. We'll all do those, then we're going to have to move on. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a bigger level question that would not be appropriate for this context, but it is for the future. Because I know the, we'll be looking at the levels again, and, or the board will, in about three years, am I about right in that? Three or four years? That we're going to be looking at, you know, what, what does the levels look like? And state, I mean, completely. Versus just this one grade level on one assessment, which is not appropriate. But, you know, the, the reasoning behind the bookmark method, and that was some of my questions that I had, and the reasoning behind it, why that's preferred over some, some other ones. And again, not appropriate for this conversation, but it is appropriate board conversation to have as to what's behind it. But to tag on to the, the point of, of my colleagues that have just spoken, the fixation upon test scores alone, without the other measurements in place, like graduation rates and post-secondary affective rates, returns us to the days of No Child Left Behind, where the entire academic outcome was based on this. And I have a fear that there are people using No Child Left Behind, that would love us to return to the days of No Child Left Behind, which we saw a degradation, I would say, lowering of standards to, to obtain those, those levels that you had to have in certain percentages. And then we reversed it as soon as we got ESSA. And that is a real fear. And, and using this as a tool to say, hey, we're failing. In the workforce, as far as I've encountered, I've hired people. I've helped people get jobs. I've applied for jobs. I've never had somebody ask me what my state assessment test results were. I've never had it applying to college, what my state assessment. But I've had, what's your high school diploma? Do you have a high school diploma or GED? Usually a high school diploma. That's always a question that's asked in, in access to the workforce. So I think in the larger picture is, is what does the industry and business of what sets our kids up for success? This is a good measure. We need this. But this is part of a larger message in there. And, and a larger conversation that would be appropriate down the pike is what, what is, you know, the bookmark method? Why is that preferred over some other ones? So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Michelle.
Thank you, Chairman Porter. I'll try to be quick. I think a lot of it is messaging. We talked about that across, all across the board today. And some of the labeling, some of the words we're using, college and career and all that. I, I go back to my own children, and it's parent, teacher, child. Are they turning their quizzes in, on time? And are they failing those quizzes? Well, that's okay if they fail a quiz, because that's kind of a benchmark to say, either all the kids are failing it, maybe I need to go slow, or. So as far as going back to, are the parents happy and engaged in their child's education? I feel like I am, because I feel like I'm communicating with my teachers. The teachers are communicating with me, and they're communicating with my children. And, and it's that back and forth. Are you happy with what's going on, what's being taught, and what your child's doing? Are they turning their assignments in on time? Are they completing, are they doing well in their finals? It means they're progressing, they're doing, if they did well in the final, they, they grasp the entire semester. Those are the kinds of things, I think, we need to talk about it at the state level, but also tell the parents, get back to, what are they learning? Are they, and are you communicating that with the, with the teacher? That I'm, I'm happy, or I'm, I'm not happy, or what's going on? It has to be, it has to be back to the local level and in the classroom. So messaging is important on that. But again, state assessments, one test. How many are taking it? How many aren't taking it? How many have opted out of it? Are we seeing the, are we seeing the whole picture? I don't, I don't think that we are, because not everyone's taking the state assessments.
Okay, that's the last question. What else? Beth, are we? Are you presenting? Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody had the opportunity.
No, we're ready. If you're ready, we're ready for you to make a decision on the recommendations that were presented for setting the performance levels on the grade 10 math.
A motion would be in order. Ann?
Thank you. I move that the Kansas State Board of Education approved the recommended performance levels and cut scores for the math grade 10 state assessment.
Is there a second to that motion? Jim McNeese seconds that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Abstain? 901, did you get that, Barbara? Thank you. Just a, a side bit, we go back to the comments about No Child Left Behind. The school district that I was in at the, during No Child Left Behind, high school math, the scores went from 29% to 95% over that period of time, with no change in the number of students that needed to be remediated when they got to college. So, you know, that was, that looked really good. But if we were, if we were measuring success, it didn't translate. So I, I certainly hope we don't go back to No Child Left Behind. Anything else, Beth? Thank you. Thank you very much. And welcome to those of you that are joining us by Zoom. There we go.
Chairman Porter and state board members and Dr. Watson, thank you very much for the opportunity to present today on Vaping Echo for Education Cohorts 1 and 2. And as you can see via Zoom, we do have the pleasure of having a couple of individuals join us. We have Mary Alice Kelly from Shawnee Mission North. And we have Vince Nakarado from Royal Valley Middle School. And my intent today is to kind of breeze through my slides so that we can give Mary Alice and Vince an opportunity to share their perspectives and, and insights. What you should have in your hands that are coming to you is a one-page handout that by and large has most of the information that I'll be presenting on the, on the PowerPoint, so that we can kind of get through that information and get to the more important part, which is to hear from, from the schools. I am Mark Thompson. I'm an education program consultant for the Agency for Health and Physical Education. And I've had the opportunity to participate in the Vaping Echo for Education, which I've presented previously on. But I know it's been a while. So this is in part going to be a little bit of a refresher and update, and then kind of a projection for where, where we are heading. So Echo in a nutshell, we've talked about this previously. It stands for Extension for Community Healthcare Outcomes. It's a model that emphasizes collaboration and is built on four principles. Using technology to leverage scarce resources, sharing best practices to reduce disparities, employ case-based learning and guided practice, and to monitor program outcomes. We, we don't need to get into the, all the background of it, but it was basically developed by a physician in New Mexico who really was trying to reach the more remote areas of the state and develop this opera, this system by which he could interact with professionals across the state and get information into the hands of those who, those who needed it. This is truly a collaborative effort. This almost looks like a NASCAR. But it is, everybody who has played a part in this great partners with KDHE, with KUMed, Kansas Health Institute, Kansas Association of School Boards, the Masonic Cancer Alliance, and DECA also. Just as a reminder, a year ago at this time, we were getting geared up for Cohort 1, which we were calling the Pilot, Pilot Echo. Now that we have number two, we're calling that Cohort 1. We received 49 applications from across the state. We selected 20. Initially, our intent was to have 10 teams. But because of how many applications we received, we decided to double that. We ended up with 20 teams. And you can see the breakdown of the distribution, as well as the population density, had really a wide range of sizes and geographical representation of, of those schools. Again, this is the, the map. And the yellow dots all indicate where those schools were located. Again, a pretty good geographic representation of, of the state. So, a year ago, we were, as I mentioned, we were getting geared up. We held a summit the first of September. And then every two weeks for five, five sessions, we had different, we had echos. And the next slide is going to kind of break down what an echo session consisted of. But we started with addressing tobacco prevention in schools, addressing legal issues, understanding addiction and cessation, motivational interviewing, and finally, student-centered approach. Then that culminated on December 8th with the teams presenting their action plans. That this is what we are, are planning on doing. And then in the spring, on April 20th, they presented an update on their action plans. This is what we did. The structure, we had content experts each time, related to the, the topics that you saw on the previous slide. We had a didactic portion where they had 15 minutes to, to explain to all of the, the participants what it is. You know, what is vaping? Why, why are we paying attention to this? What are the legal challenges? How do you use motivational interviewing? All of those things. Then we grouped, we had all of the, the teams grouped regionally. Had five different breakouts of four schools per, so that they could spend approximately half an hour sharing their own case study. This, this is what we are encountering. And this is what we've tried. This is what has worked. This what hasn't worked. And then give them an opportunity to interact and say, well, this is, this is a resource in our area that you might want to tap into. This is something that, that you might want to try. So they, they process those strategies. And, and then we kind of cut them loose for 15 minutes, realizing that time is very precious for them. And we, so we allotted an hour and a half each of these Wednesdays for them to work on this. But we wanted to give them 15 minutes for them to just meet as a team. Not, you know, so that they could work on their action plan and move forward. The learning objectives, develop a network of stakeholders so to help figure out their plan for how they were going to reduce vaping in schools, build capacity to increase the confidence of the schools. Because we wanted them to feel like they were capable of, of addressing, addressing this. Developing skills of the school health professionals. Things like motivational interviewing. How do you implement something, something like that? And also to evaluate the quality, effectiveness, and impact of the program on schools. Because not only was this an, an intervention, but it was also, we, we used it, some of our entities used it for research. KUMed and, and Kansas Health Institute were really interested in being able to see, you know, what is the impact on, of, of something like this? So here are some of the results. Over 81% of the respondents indicated that more than 25% of the pilot information was new to them. Again, these are, these are the, the markers that the, the researchers had, had identified. 57% indicated that they learned from case studies presented by other schools. About 53% learned from all or most of the action plans presented by the other schools. And about 73% found the toolkit somewhat or very useful. So as the, the echos progressed, different additional chapters were added to the toolkit so that schools could access it. Online toolkit. so that schools could access it, online toolkit, and saying, okay, if you're interested in the, the legal challenges, this is what we've, we've put together for you. Here's your toolkit to, to help. So it, it built over time. Seventeen out of the 20 schools submitted action plans. We were obviously hoping for all 20, but, you know, life happens and, and schools are busy. 65% of the submitted action plans included at least two goals for the pilot period. And of those that, that completed the follow-up survey, about two-thirds of those schools indicated they met all or most of their action plan goals. So these are what I consider the successes from my perspective. A high level of participation, collaboration between schools. This was really fun. I was one of the facilitators for the Southwest grouping of, of schools, and it was nice to, to see them kind of work with, with each other. I happen to have a school from Garden City, Dodge City, Ulysses, and Wallace County. And being them, you know, you have Wallace County, this very frontier, being able to share that they connected with a resource from, from DECA out of Hays that all, that, that Ulysses could, could take advantage of. Ulysses had, they did a great job of tapping into some available grant funds that, that they shared. And, and so that was fun, fun to see. There was some evidence of change of mindset. The big thing here was to get away from an automatic punitive. You know, you vape, we're going to suspend you. Well, the problem with, with that is that what are they going to do while they're being suspended? Well, they're probably going to vape. And the more they vape, the more, you know, it's just self-fulfilling. But we, we had quite a bit of pushback on, on that one. But the more we worked with them, the more we explained best practices, the more we kind of saw them coming around, around to that. Development of a team approach. We had, you know, we have Mary Alice, who's the, the school nurse. We have Vince, who's a principal. We had counselors. We had coaches. We had superintendents. We had classroom teachers, local health departments. Just really, the focus is on developing a, a team approach. And kind of already addressed those other two. Another success that we had was connecting content experts with schools. And this is at the heart of what Echo is supposed to do. It's supposed to be able to take individuals who don't have resources readily available to them and be able to, to tap into it, whether it's through KUMed, or whether it's through DECA, or whether it's through a, a local health department. It reflected the, as I mentioned, it reflected the true intent and design of Echo approach. We utilized national as well as local experts. We had a representative from the CDC and also some, some individuals from the Health Institute up in Minnesota. Some of our successes happened by design, and some we just kind of stumbled into. Some of it just kind of fell in our lap. So we are on the cusp of Cohort Two. Our target applicants this time around were schools who applied but weren't selected for Cohort One, and also schools that have Resist chapters, which are student anti-tobacco initiatives. Our goal is 20 school teams, and we're currently finalizing the Cohort Two schools. We are currently at 14. So we're, we're, we aren't quite at 20, but I, I also recognize that when we first started this, our, our initial thought going into the pilot was 10. We were, 10 was our, our goal. And the, the people that I worked with on, on this, they were really hesitant about, about doubling it to go to 20. Found out that we could do 20, so that was our goal this time. We just haven't had quite the, the response for schools that have, have submitted applications, but we're, we're really trying to get there. And the other piece is that we are relying on the experience of some participants in Cohort One, such as Mary Alice and, and Vince. Sorry, previous.
And Mark, we have a question from Ann. Okay, go ahead.
I'm almost done. So the, the Cohort Two timeline is, looks very similar to the Cohort One. I just want to point out that, that on our Echos, we, we altered some of the, the order of these. And like we move, and, and we're highlighting putting cessation into practice up there at number, number two. We moved legal challenges down one, and Echo Five is going to be a focus on community partners. So some of this is a reflection of lessons learned that we had from, from Cohort One. But so, so Ann, a question for me, or want to hear from the? Yeah.
Thank you. Well, I was wondering, one, are you still taking applications in for Cohort Two if they're?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because the summit's coming up pretty quick. Okay, my big concern is the same as it's always been. Do we know how many kids are actually addicted? And is there anything out there?
What, what we are, we are really hoping for is to get our YRBS results soon. And, and the, on our Youth Risk Behavior Survey, we ask a question of, of daily use of vaping, and that, that tends to be probably the biggest indicator of, of addiction levels. And once we get that, we'll be able to look at three sets of data, 2017, 2019, and 2021, and be able to get a sense of where we're headed in terms of the level of addiction.
Okay, but is there anything out there to help them? I know everybody said, well, you know, that if you're an adult and you're addicted, they give you something to taper off, and they didn't want to do that with kids, but they give kids meds for all kinds of stuff, so why not?
It's, it's evolving, actually. And this is probably where I, I need to pull in some, some other people that are, are part of, of the Echo. But I know that because we've really had to take a different approach, I know that they are looking at, you know, the, the flexibility in being able to prescribe nicotine patches or, or other nicotine withdrawal options.
Okay, we're just still looking at that though?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for what you're doing, because this has been kind of near and dear to my heart, because I know how serious it is. My question, and maybe you, I probably don't have the data, but I was just curious if you saw any, what happened during COVID? Because, I mean, they weren't here, so what happened?
Yeah, that, that's where I think Mary Alice and Vince may have a better sense of, of what happened during COVID. Because again, all I have to rely on is kind of word of mouth and waiting on the, the YRBS data. But I think that Vince and, and Mary Alice, being in the schools and being in schools over that period of time, probably have the best sense. Because a year ago, at this time, you know, kids were just, in, in many instances, kids were just coming back. And, and so that was part, a lot of the conversation was, we don't, they didn't know what to expect. And Mary Alice can probably speak to this, but I, I know our, our school nurse, who was part of our, our Echo team, was really seeing a high level of, of addiction of students because they hadn't been in school and, you know, coming out of summer. So high level of addiction for students that had tremendous difficulty making it through an hour of school or a morning without just having withdrawal symptoms.
I can jump in there if I may.
Curious though.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. What I noticed when we were actually shut down is that most businesses that sold these items were considered essential, and so they remained open during the pandemic when most of, we, most of the businesses were shut down, which gave kids and their parents the opportunity to buy these products and therefore become addicted to these products very easily and very quickly. They, their time was spent pretty much shut down in their homes, or, you know, maybe if they had a chance to get out and visit with family or friends. But invariably, that was really the ripe time for these products to explode in our student population.
I would kind of echo that as well, because what we saw, once the students came out of the pandemic, that's when we really saw a huge explosion and, and usage of vaping, and kids trying to get out of class every period. And so that kind of led to us wanting to go ahead and apply for the Echo to, to be a part of that pilot.
I don't like the answer. But I guess I, I just don't understand. How did parents not know? I mean, most of the kids were.
Oh, the parents know. Usually the parents know. The parents also vape. And at least what I have seen is, you know, when I'm trying to help a kiddo stop vaping and the parent picks him up, and I, I actually almost got into a, a virtual doctor's appointment with this particular student. He asked me to join, and the mom says, yeah, well, I smoke, and so does his dad. And I'm like, uh. So I, there are so many factors that are obstacles to getting kids away from this product. And luckily, through Echo, the thought of even joining a doctor's appointment was not something that we even considered until we talked about it in our Echo group. And I spoke to my Health Services Director, and she gave me the green light. And, you know, she was very ecstatic that I was even actually invited to join that doctor's appointment. So again, we also have to, we're educating the doctors and the pediatricians about the need for this particular item to be prescribed for kids. Because it's not, it would be considered, I don't, it's just not something that was originally for children or teens. It was for adults who were trying to stop smoking. So yes, it's very disturbing, but I see some hope. And if we can get into the kids even younger, like junior high or middle school or elementary, and get them to notice, you know, how bad it is to use, because a lot of times by high school, they're already addicted. So I, I feel like we need to get to the kids before they even have an opportunity. I'm kind of on a soapbox, sorry.
I stay there all the time. So Mark, go ahead with the, the presentation, because we need to move on.
Mary Alice, I'd like to hear from you, kind of your perspectives and, and insights, and then we'll turn it to Vince. And Mary Alice, I just want to point out that, that somebody is trying to get into your ceiling behind you. Either that, or they're, no, 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 no. Sorry.
I kind of had to find a spot.
That was, that was not my intent, sorry. My humor goes, my humor goes off track sometimes. So Mary Alice, can we hear from you first on your perspectives and insights?
I was, I was very lucky, because my team in my school, I had an administrator, I had a resource officer, I had a counselor, I had a classroom teacher, I had a health room teacher, and I had a community member, a parent. And they were dedicated to this process. And we, we have really figured out how we're going to move forward this year with our Resist group starting and getting the word out there. And, you know, I've also actually pinpointed some students, one of which has quit, but two still vape, and, and asked them, I've invited them to join this, this process, and they are back yet, but I plan on following up with that when the kids come back and getting them into the meetings and, and, you know, just getting that, have, maybe have a friend come join or, or something like that. So I feel very positive about this. I know we moved a little slower than the, the smaller school districts because we are a big entity, and policy change is sometimes time-consuming. But luckily, the, our principals were able to kind of modify when they suspended and when they didn't when it came to vaping. And I felt like that was a huge, huge step for us last year, just to keep the kids in school instead of sending them home.
Thank you, Mary Alice. All right, Vince?
Well, for us, we had a major shift, and Mark kind of alluded to this as well, going from being very punitive when a student vapes at school to trying to help them. And so now, if they're caught the first time, it's a short, our, our counselor will actually work with them in terms of some education. And if there's a second time, then we go to a more intensive education program, and the kids work on that in the office. You know, we don't, we realize sending them home is not going to be effective. We did, we were fortunate, and one of my teachers wanted to start a Resist program, and so we got that started the second semester, and they were already presenting to our students here at Reno Valley. And our big goal this coming year for them is to go to our two elementary schools. That is our target. We know that sending my middle school kids up to the high school is not going to be effective. However, you know, our goal is to, to stop them before they even come here and let them know, hey, this is a danger. And one other really good thing for us that came out of this is our partnership with Reno County Health Department. Anna ended up being on our team, part of our Echo team, and she and I have been working very closely on some things, and we're trying to get some grants that will help us do a little bit more in terms of education for our students as well. So we're, we're excited. We, we had big goals, and we're working towards those. And we even had one kid, I know this doesn't sound like a lot, but we had one kid from our school actually call My Life Might Quit and contact them about how to get some help. So I mean, it's, it's a baby step, but it's a step. So great experience for us.
Well, thank you both. And I, at this point, I just kind of open it up to board members that if you have questions for Mary Alice, or, or Vince, or myself, be happy to, to respond to, to those.
We appreciate the, the information. This is something that we've been concerned about for a while. You know, it's, it was relatively new. I guess it's getting old, but it's, it's something that, you know, I never faced as a school administrator. But, but others are, and I'm glad that we have a plan, and then hope that we can basically save lives. I don't see.
And, and word of this is, is spreading, first of all, that this is the, to the best of our knowledge, it's the first and only Echo that has been used to address vaping in schools. And we've had national presentations. Members of our, our group have presented on this nationally, and there are research papers that are in various stages of development and submission. So this is, it, we've received some, some nice acclaim for, for the efforts. But kind of going back to, you know, that is nice, but for, for Vince, having a student that, that takes the initiative to, to reach out and do My Life Might Quit, and for him at Reno Valley Middle School to have his students that he will now be sending down into the elementary and, and trying to encourage those, those students to, to stay away from it, and Mary Alice to also have a Resist chapter developing and already targeting students who are coming in to be part of, of the team. Mary Alice listed the various roles of people that were part of her team, and Vince noted the great partnership that he developed with Reno Valley, with the Reno County Health Department. That's, that all came from, from this. Those things would not have happened without us pulling these people together. And, and that, to me, is, is, is encouraging, and the, the promise of this type of initiative moving forward. Mary Alice, I, I know you're looking like you still want to say something, so.
Um, no, I, I guess I have a question for the school, for the State Board. Would, would it be possible to add a policy? I know most school districts follow policy set by the board. Do you all know if you have a vaping policy that you could give or share or make available to the schools of the state of Kansas?
And I'll, I'll, I'll hop in on that, on Mary Alice. The Vaping Task Force developed a, a comprehensive tobacco policy that included. a comprehensive tobacco policy that included vaping. And we and the state board adopted that. And then that was passed on to the Kansas Association of School Boards, who pretty much adopted that as is, and then sent that out, because the many, I don't know if it's most, or, but many schools in the state simply look to KASB as their guidance for policy implementation. And so what KASB has put out there is what the, this state Board of Education has approved.
And KASB is the vehicle that school, that local school board used for that. So the answer to your question apparently is yes.
That'll make it very easy for me to get it past our board.
Well, thank you all. We appreciate the information, appreciate the direction, and wish you the best. Continue, continue the good work, and we will reconvene at 1:30.
Mary Alice and Vince, thank you very much.
We are going to recognize the 2020 National Finalists for the President Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. I assume that our presenter is going to be Denise. Welcome.
That is I. Thank you so much. Well, it's an honor to be able to do this, and I want to emphasize that these are the 2020 Presidential Awards for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching winners. So I don't want to bring this up, but it is 2022. So historically, so the White House announces these each year, and they have, historically runs a little bit slower, so we're about a year behind on this. So with me today is Callie Harris and Zarin Olsey. They are among 110 educators being recognized as finalists. Before I introduce them, I wanted to remind you a little bit about the program, that this is considered the highest award for those who teach math and science. It's presented to educators who show a high degree of knowledge, innovation, skill, and leadership. They must be nominated for the award, and they complete a very rigorous application process. And they will tell you, I'm sure we were just talking about that, that it is pretty, pretty hefty. So elementary and secondary educators are recognized in alternating years. They, our state can nominate up to six finalists, three each of science and three of math. And then two finalists are selected. And again, our two finalists are Callie and Zarin. So Callie currently serves as an assistant principal at Prey Woodman Elementary School in Mays, USD 266. But at the time of her nomination, she was a mathematics teacher at Mays Elementary School. She taught in elementary schools for 17 years, teaching at McLean Science and Technology Magnet Elementary in Wichita for seven years before moving to Mays Elementary School. Zarin Olsey is a science teacher, and she's been an educator for more than 20 years, and she had taught at McLean Science and Technology Magnet for the past 17 years. And prior to this, she taught at Earhart Environmental Magnet Elementary, Wichita, USD 259, for three years. So we are going to hear from both of them today. And, okay. The ball.
Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having us. And thank you so much for all the work that you do on behalf of Kansas students. I'm just going to walk you through, let's see the mouse. Here we go. I'm just going to walk you through a little bit of life in our science lab at McLean. We are a science and...
Did you find it?
Yeah, I just got to get my mouse up there. There we go. All right. As Denise said, I teach at McLean Science and Technology Magnet Elementary. And we do have a science lab where students are very hands-on with living things and all sorts of explorations. We're also outdoors. We have an outdoor wildlife learning site, so these kids are finding milkweed bugs, which is a super fun thing to find. We received a grant for our owl site, the outdoor wildlife learning site, in 2017. And these are our students actually putting the very first native Kansas plants in the ground. In the middle of this picture, if you look, you will see a beautiful garden spider. It was one of the discoveries that our kids found a year ago, and it was, just brought so much excitement to them. It's just so much fun. We have family workdays, usually the first Saturday of the month where the kids bring their parents and they help us keep track of the owl site. And we always do a seed harvest, because we want the students to know that seeds don't just come from a package at Walmart. They actually come from the plant itself, and then we reuse those next year to plant. So these are kindergartners learning about the bones. You might find students collecting data on mealworms, exploring a cow heart and lungs, doing a cow eye dissection. These are our third graders. Our fourth graders do a squid dissection each year to learn about form and structure. Our kindergartners here are finishing a unit on wood, and woodworking day is a favorite, where parents and grandparents are invited and the kids get to use the tools. We go into physical sciences, lots of fun explorations. We might be building rollercoasters. We wrote a grant several years ago for a Lego, we do robotics set, and the kids enjoy building the Lego robots. When we get to the earth and space sciences, we might be outdoor, exploring sundials, or we might be building our own Artemis Orion space exploration vehicle and have the crew. Every year, we do several school-wide science events. This is just an example of our water racer rally. The students will build water racers or little boats out of recycled materials. One year, we had the rainforest rescue, where they made their own reinforced animal of their choice. This one was called Not a Box, based on a favorite children's book. Each student created something that was not a box. And we also have school-wide buddy classroom engineering challenges. This was one for building bridges. This was our egg drop, our Artemis egg drop. The students put a raw egg in a package of their choice, hoping it would survive the fall from 50 feet with our fire truck. That was just last May. And one of our favorite things in the science lab is we have a custom-built top bar beehive. This is our beekeeper. He checks in on us. This was a hive check he was doing. And through the window, he showed the kids the fresh honeycomb that the bees had built. This is a tunnel that actually goes from, the beehive is on my windowsill, and the tunnel goes up. And this was a swarming day. The bees actually swarmed out of the tunnel. I was hoping to show you the video, but it won't work. But you can see, and the kids just love watching the bees. We also have a pet bearded dragon lizard and a pet tarantula. So anyway, thank you for your time. I just wanted to give you a glimpse of the joy I get to have each day, teaching elementary, kindergarten through fifth graders' science. Thank you so much.
And when we get finished, we're going to want to have some photo ops, so be sure to hang around.
I got a little worried about whether the technology might work, so I went old school and made you a little, little printed packet. I'm Callie Harris. Thank you so much for letting us come to visit today. It was fun for me to get to see Zarin present. She and I actually taught together my first seven years of teaching, so it has been really fun to get to do this together. When I won this award, I had been at Mays Elementary for about 10 years. I, the last seven years there, I probably had the dreamiest job around for me. It was K-5 math intervention. So I got to work with kindergarten through fifth graders, two sections each day. I saw about 125 kids who needed to fall in love with math. These students were ones who might be anywhere from the first percentile up to the 30th percentile, but had extreme deficits in math. And I, I got to just bring joy to math every day, and that was probably one of the greatest gifts I got, I got to give to these students. A little anecdotal fact, I recorded the video for this PAMST award on the last day before COVID shutdown, so I think I will probably never forget that. I presented the question. We, what I did in my math lab is we, it was hands-on math. Every time you experienced math, you had your hands on some sort of tool, and you did not get to pick up your pencil until you could build, and then you could draw, and then you could explain what you had just done to your partner or to me, and then be able to write it in directions. So that's what our, our problem was. Moms run out of bread. She has enough to make two sandwiches, but there are five people at home. How, how much of that sandwich are you going to get? And I worked with that with our fourth graders, and they had to work in partners, and they were not allowed to have any pencil or even the paper with it. They had to experience with math tools, how to divide a whole number by fractions. And we, this took us a week, because they had to build it. And they, they really learned quickly. If they ask a question, I'll probably say, I don't know, what, what do you think? How can you experience that? Show me. What have you tried? And one of my favorite things that I saw in this recording was they got out color tiles, which are just little, I brought some, I should have brought them up, just little one-inch squares with all different kinds of colors. And I said, hey, girls, what, what's this green part? And they said, oh, that's just the table. And that, oh, okay. But it just kind of really showed me where those, those kids were and their understanding of math, and they really needed to still have their hands on that. That was actually a fifth grade standard, and every single one of those students in my intervention lab was able to solve that problem, draw the picture, and successfully explain, when you divide a whole number by a fraction, you just would get, the answer would be two fifths. Another part of my award you're going to see in those pictures, I had written about a $12,000 STEAM grant to have a Stop Everything and STEAM Day at Mays Elementary. And we were able to K-5, get programmable robots and block coding and all sorts of engineering materials. We were able to partnership, build a partnership with Wichita State University Engineering Department. So we had engineering students come in for two semesters, and they would help our students learn to code. At our, our school board meeting, I had a, one of the school board members say, did you have anybody just fall in love with teaching? And I said, oh, those engineers, they just really learned that teaching was a lot harder than they thought it was, because they just, they thought they were going to present a PowerPoint to a five-year-old and explain to them how to do block coding. And so we had to, so you have 30 seconds to explain it, and then they have to be able to do it. Another part of our, our award was talking about how you've given back to the profession. So I did a lot of co-teaching and mentoring with our special education teachers. You, you are probably aware that getting people into the special education realm can be difficult, and retaining teachers there is, is more difficult. I'm learning that in the new admin realm that I am, I am in. But I was able to bring special education teachers in their first through third years, and we co-taught together. And I would start by planning the lessons, and they would bring their students in, and we co-taught together. We collected data, and then they began to plan, and we did that together. And I, we just grew an amazing crop of special education teachers. So that's just a little bit about what I did for that award, and it was just a really fun journey and lots of good reflection. Thank you so much for your time.
Anything else?
No, I did want to say, I forgot to mention that as part of their award, they received a $10,000 cash prize, and they also received a trip to Washington DC.
Okay.
And I'm sure they would love to answer any questions you might have.
Well, we, we just want to congratulate you and tell you that we're very proud of you. We need people in the profession that have that same passion and, and willingness to meet the needs of each student. This was very, very enlightening and very exciting to see. I like the hands-on approach. This time, we want to take pictures, so I ask you to come up one at a time, and then we'll invite the board members who represent your district to join us, right in front of this table. At this time, we're going to recognize the Best Practices Awards in Child Nutrition Programs, and we are happy to have Cheryl with us. Welcome, Cheryl.
Well, thank you. I'm happy to be here. Chairman Porter, state board members, Commissioner Watson, it is always exciting to be able to award these cans-in-can certificates for best practices in child nutrition programs, but even more so this year, because this past school year has had lots of challenges for child nutrition operators with supply chain issues and staffing issues and just navigating all that. But even with all that happening, we have two award recipients here with us today. One isn't able to come. I do want to let you know that upfront. The Mays folks, they have a childcare issue, and they needed to stay and, and, and work. So, but these two child nutrition programs have gone, gone above and beyond. And so I am just thrilled to be able to honor them today. I'm going to advance the slide here. And we will start by just talking about Mays. They aren't here today. They are receiving the Kansas Can Implement Innovative Meal Pattern Strategies, and their high school cafeteria staff developed a QVC code that could be on the packaging for new menu items, so that the students could just scan that and give input real time. And they found that it was just a really, really good way to determine what items should be on the menu or not. And so I'm sad they can't be here, because I thought that was just amazing, that they were getting student input and the creativity that they used to develop that code and use that for their menu planning. So Scott County, all the way from almost the western Kansas border, Kathy, you want to come on up? We have with us Kathy Eaton, their food service director, Carol Latham, and Julie Williams. Come on up, ladies. They've been up. They left early this morning to get here, right? They are going to get home late, but I suppose they're going to be working tomorrow already. And Kathy, tell me how many lunches you've served this summer?
This summer, it was 11,550, about 50, breakfast and lunches.
Yeah, I mean, that is just amazing. Such an increase over other years for them. Yeah, I mean, that is just amazing. Such an increase over other years for them. So they have been working hard all summer. Well Kathy Eaton and her staff, they rose to the challenge of preparing and testing and standardizing two recipes incorporating sorghum. This was a new adventure for Kathy and her staff as none of them had ever tasted sorghum, let alone prepared sorghum, which of course is a local Kansas grain. And I'm sure many of you know that in western Kansas, they grow a lot of sorghum, right? Through their work with the Child Nutrition and Wellness Team, they successfully prepared and served chocolate muffins made with 100% whole grain flour. And the Kansas Fried Rice Recipe incorporating a 50/50 blend of whole grain brown rice and whole grain sorghum. So they rose to the challenge and were the first district in Kansas to serve this local food. Kathy also provided valuable feedback to Child Nutrition and Wellness and to the producers of the whole grain sorghum grain and whole sorghum grain flour with regards to preparation and student acceptance. And believe it or not, after they did this recipe testing, they've now added sorghum to the USDA Food Buying Guide. So that's really, they were truly leaders here. And they also helped, we need to tell them this, we had a team nutrition grant in which students in fax classes developed recipes. And one of them actually made a whole grain chocolate sorghum muffin that they then further tested and refined. And now it can be served in Kansas schools. So.
And I'm sure they brought samples.
No, but it was really good.
Whoa, rub it in.
So these folks really exemplify that Kansans can serve local foods and our local grains. Just very exciting. And we'll have a picture in just a little bit ladies, but we want to present the certificate to you all. Okay, we'll take the pictures in a minute. But thank you all. They really did meet the challenge for us. Okay, and then we have Haven. So would our group from Haven please come up? With Cherie Jones, their food service director, we have their superintendent Craig, Craig Ida Kivage. Did I, I hope they spelled it correctly. Thank you. I appreciate that. Lydia, who is the grade school cook, right? And we have Patricia Cunningham, our head cook now at the grade school.
High school.
You're at the high school. She is moving to the high school. She was at the grade school. All right. Well, they are getting the Kansans Can Lead Award. When Haven decided to become a farm-to-school location, they had no idea how far they could go. They knew that it would be a huge team effort that would include not only the kitchen staff, but also the Haven FFA, Haven Agriculture Classes and the Haven Maintenance Staff. So what started out as the agriculture class growing some lettuce in the greenhouse turned into growing foods for their entire salad bar. Haven grew food for school and summer meal programs, both inside and outside of the greenhouse. Local produce such as lettuce, tomatoes, cucumbers, broccoli, peppers, and radishes grow abundantly well. In the spirit of collaboration and leadership, the Haven Maintenance Staff helped run water lines to the outside garden and even helped plant the outside area. Haven completed their first full year of procuring fresh local beef too this past year. Student feedback supported the change to local beef and students prefer it to the commercially processed beef previously used. Imagine that. The quality of the fresh beef, along with the fact that one of Haven's local family farms produced it, made the partnership even more special. Haven Schools have grown their farm-to-school program in a short amount of time. Another bright spot of all their success is that they have been able to mentor and provide leadership to other districts using their program as an example. They have proven that the hardest part was taking that first step. And the rest, they say, is farm-fresh history. And it's really true. They are serving so many local foods at Haven and we're so proud of them and thankful to this group for their leadership for others around the state. Because Cherie is willing, she actually was our person we came to to help our new farm-to-school grantees with their implementation. So, so deserving of this Kansas Can Lead Award. So congratulations to you all.
And we'd like to take pictures. Since you're already standing, you might as well be first.
Yes, we want their pictures. Thank you all for supporting child nutrition programs with these awards. Yep, come on. I'm going to get in there too.
We've, we've had to do right, what, five or six?
Five or six.
That's about a third.
Picture, I need to officially hand you misty.
Okay.
Too much.
I, I look this way. One, two, three. Big smile.
All right, okay. Ladies serve.
Next group.
These ladies had a long trip this morning.
And they did. We're going to make this work for a while right now. Cross it across.
You can get closer, you can stand older there.
Like one, two, three.
Now, all the recipients and all the board members, join us.
We'll just fill this hole.
Chairman Porter is a great supporter of our program.
I'm thinking you'd be up front.
Oh, I've never been up front of a picture.
You get to go in the front.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thanks, sir. I hope you guys.
I, I, I.
So happy you guys came.
Don't worry about it, shake it up a little bit.
Shake it up? Shake it up, huh?
That's right.
We want to congratulate all the recipients and wish you a safe trip home. And now we are going to talk about some KISA recommendations that was presented to us in July. Jay.
Thank you Chair Porter. Thank you to the board. Good afternoon. I was trying to think of a witty transition from innovation in food service to accreditation, but I don't have anything. So we're just going to roll right into it. We are close to the finish line with, with the systems that were in year five last school year, now that we've started a new school year. And so we're very close to the finish line. Yeah, I'm really good at clearing out a room. I just want to recognize a few people in the room. We have USD 501 in the room. Thank you for coming. And also my team, Myron Melton and Sarah Perryman, they're staying off camera for some reason, shy. But great team. And so we're, we're very excited to present to you the, the most recent ARC recommendations for accreditation. Today we have 34 systems for action, four systems as receive, and then we have five systems left that are in the middle at varying degrees in the appeal process. So here is the process for accreditation. Starts with compliance and foundational structures. It's a five-year growth process to improve in the state board outcomes through that process. There are yearly visits by the outside visitation team and there is, there are yearly system reports and OVT chair reports. The year five is that accreditation year where we're looking at, the ARC is looking at process and growth in student performance. The ARC reviews that all the documentation. The recommendation goes to the full, each of these systems goes before the full ARC for action. And then that's a recommendation that we bring to the board. And as you see, the ARC writes the executive summary that you are able to review and makes that recommendation for an accreditation status. So just quickly on the accreditation definitions, accredited means not only is the, is the system in good standing as far as compliance with the state board, they've also shown conclusive evidence of growth in student performance and in a quality process. Conditionally accredited still must be in compliance, must be in good standing with the board. And either the system did not provide conclusive evidence of growth in student performance or they didn't have conclusive evidence of following, following a quality process. And then not accredited can mean one of two things. If they're not in compliance, that's justification for a not accredited recommendation. Or the system didn't provide conclusive evidence of both growth in student performance and following a process. So back in July, we, as receive items, you had 34 systems. And these are the 34 systems that I'll present to you today for, for action. Before I jump into that, I want to bring out one technical error in the board reports. We found out that in the KISA app, there was a technical error around the report for Stockton, USD 271. And the, the full ARC has recommended Stockton for fully accredited. But that is not reflected in the board report that you see due to a technical error in the KISA app. But I just want you to know, Stockton has been recommended by the full ARC to be fully accredited. Okay, so we have USD 103 Cheylin, 215 Lakin, 246 Northeast of Arma, 247 Cherokee, 248 Gerard, 255 South Barber, 264 Clearwater, 265 Goddard, 266 Mays, 271 Stockton, 283 Elk Valley, 305 Salina, 310 Fairfield, 315 Colby and Harrington, 501 Topeka, 511 Attica. And then we have systems, private systems, Brookridge Day School, Bishop Ward High School, St. James Academy, Corpus Christi Catholic School, Salina Archdiocese. So all of those are being recommended for full accreditation. The last two for action are Moscow and Liberal, USD 209 Moscow and USD 480 Liberal. They are both being recommended for conditional accreditation.
And we have a question for Betty.
Thank you. If you could just give a brief explanation when you say where the schools are showing growth. Let's see, go back to your definition of accreditation. Where it shows conclusive evidence of growth in student performance. Tell us exactly what you take a look at to come to that conclusion.
So the ARC, the ARC looks at the yearly accountability report. So the board, the accountability report for the system, which is a public report, anybody can go to it. You can look at it at the building level, you can look at it at the system level, which is what the ARC looks at. So for instance, with Stockton, the ARC pulls up their yearly accountability report and, and looks at that, measures that. If there are any questions on the accountability report, they may go and look at their local data that the system may or may not have provided in their report. But basically the ARC looks at that report as evidence of growth in student performance.
Jay, just for you with the board, what is that data?
That report that they're looking at?
Yeah. So the data that they can look at is the star recognition, right? So if they've been recognized in any of those qualitative or any of the quantitative areas, they would see that. There is state assessment data for the system in all three tested areas as compared to the state, only levels three and four. So what, what the ARC can look at on that accountability report is the level of, levels three and four students, the percentage in that district, in that system versus the state average of levels three and four. That's on the front page. Underneath that, there's post-secondary effective rates, there's high school graduation rates. They look at the five-year for, for post-secondary effectiveness. They can see the graduation rate by year. They can see their post-secondary effectiveness rate by year. And then on the back of that sheet is a comparison of all levels on state assessments for that particular, for a couple of years as a comparison. So you can see all level, your percentage of all levels on all three tested areas by the system. You can see the percentages and compare them from, right now we have a comparison from the spring of 2019 to the spring of 2021, since we didn't test in 20.
And my point was really to show that there are several things, not just, that we take into consideration. And for a school to be accredited indicates that they are doing some things right. There is the perception that Kansas schools are failing all of the students and that there really is no oversight. So I'm just taking the opportunity to highlight those things that we are doing great. Thank you so much.
I appreciate that.
Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is actually for my colleague next to me. And then I do have a question after her.
We'll consider letting you both talk.
Well, I appreciate that consideration, but I would encourage you to let us.
I just had a couple of questions. I was wondering since now, going forward, we're combining the redesign and the accreditation efforts. How can we ensure that we're encouraging innovation without discouraging districts from, from doing that? Because they're worried about the effect on their accreditation. The other thing I was wondering is what assistance will be provided to allow the districts that are recommended for conditional accreditation to move quickly into accreditation?
I'll take on the second one first, if you don't mind. So each of the, if it is a conditional accredited recommendation from the ARC, they identify what they call an AFI. I don't intend to add to the acronym dictionary that we have, but area for improvement. And they identify that and the system then addresses that based on, and the ARC will give them a suggested timeframe. So let me give you an example. If, if a system doesn't have goals, right? They, they didn't really have a needs assessment that they could show evidence of and they really didn't have goals. Then the ARC might come back and say, well, you need to have two system goals, but you can't just, right, make those up for tomorrow, right? So they'll give them a timeframe to work through that needs assessment process and then set those goals. And then once that timeframe is done, then that, that system can come back in real time as soon as. as soon as, as soon as they feel like they're ready, they can come back to the ARC. And the assistance that's provided is really, in a lot of ways, it's up to the system as far as the, because those are adaptable issues, adaptive type challenges that they have to take on. So there's going to be a lot of different varying levels of support that, that the system would look at, but that's really on the, on the local district to seek out that support. So your first question.
Now, Jay, if I would though.
Yeah.
So that's if it's a process. What if it's a lack of student growth, performance?
Right. And I think we've got some examples of that, and you'll see some redeterminations today of systems that couldn't show conclusive evidence of growth in student performance coming back a year after. Sometimes it could be, it could be a lengthy process. If you are, let's say you're 15 percentage points below your predicted rate for, for post-secondary effectiveness, that might take a while, right? Now, the, the ARC reserves the right to, to say, okay, you need to show this, that you're on track. So in that example I gave, if you're 15 percentage points below your predicted, the ARC might say, well, once you show that you're growing in this, right, then we could, we could come back and say you're fully accredited. Or they might say, no, we need to see more growth over time. So that's, there are different, depending on the area for improvement that's identified, will really dictate that timeline that the ARC provides. And I just want to remind you, the ARC is made up of educators all across the state. So they are, they are familiar with their systems, so they, and the systems that they make recommendations on, they have that same type of thinking. So I can't, we can't thank the ARC enough for the work that they've done and will continue to do. Okay, by this time, I've forgotten your first question.
I was just wondering how we, now that we're combining redesign and accreditation, how we encourage innovation, but yet don't, don't sort of put a damper on that because districts are concerned about accreditation if they try something innovative that may or, may not be as successful.
Yeah, that's a really good question. I think that part of the, how we want to keep the innovation mindedness going forward is the caring, caring for the, they used to be referred to as the redesign principles, now they're the design principles. And making sure that systems know that those principles are a summary, a synthesis of what Dr. Watson and Dr. Nguyen Swander learned on the original community conversations. The design principles came from those conversations back in 2015, and they were reinforced on the last tour. So those are in place, and so we want to make sure that systems are aware of those and that when they're building the structure of their school, if they're thinking about instruction, those kinds of things, that those design principles are front and center. And then it is really on the system to go in and innovate through that. But I will say, you know, school improvement can take time. So if you do make an innovative move and you make changes, it's not like you're going to be accredited the next year, right? There's a, there's an improvement process that you're following, you have a plan to implement that. So we hope not to diminish in any way the innovation, we want to encourage that as much as we can. And I think, I think the board expects that. Our, our goals in the state of Kansas are very, very high, and in my mind, it's going to require innovative thinking to reach those goals.
Hey, Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This might fly in the face of, of some things I did, but as I look through a lot of these reports, that we know that, we look at a lot of things holistically for a child, graduation, post-secondary, but a test score is among them, and I'm looking at a lot of these districts that have very low test scores. And again, that's just one aspect of a child. But when I look through the ARC reports, there's very little mention of, some of them do, some of them don't, with, with, with low test scores and, you know, how we are addressing it or things to address, or even if it's a concern. So how much does the ARC, how much does it come into, I mean, is it discussed, frequently like, oh, they're starting this and these are areas that they improve, or just kind of the, the overall, when we set goals for that? And I know test scores isn't everything, I'm not placing all the onus on a test score, but it is part of the piece. And a lot of these districts that are in this packet, less than, a majority of them less than 10% scoring level four on the state assessment.
Right, so.
And that's general student population, not just substandard.
When the ARC looks at that, again, they're looking at that yearly accountability report, and on the front, it's only showing your levels three and four. So if, if that's, you know, in some cases, you, if you're just basing a decision on that, you're missing the rest of the story, right? What about your percentages in levels one and two? So that's why it's important that the ARC looks at all levels, right? And you said it, it's a part of it, it's one part of it. I think a lot of times people get in the mindset of it is more about the state assessments than anything else on that yearly accountability report, and that is not true. That is not true. In fact, most of the ARC will, maybe I'm just speaking for myself here, but when I look at those accountability reports, I go right to the post-secondary effective rate. To me, that speaks more about the education that's being provided by that system than anything else, any other number on that page. But the ARC looks at all of those factors, not just one. And so we really push them to think and go into deeper, as far as state assessments, if they see there are some concerns, a lot of times they'll go back and look at their local assessment data. All of those systems, not all, but most systems would provide, in addition to the state assessment data that's already calculated for them, they provide their screener data, their fast bridge data, right? Those kinds of things to tell the, to give the ARC a more full picture.
Yeah, and I appreciate that answer. Part of my concern is, is as we do get beat up over state assessment results, that, you know, you've, have we swung too far away from saying, A, they do have a place, and reflective, and reflective of, and these ARC reports, not saying that we have to throw everything behind, behind them, and it's unrealistic to have 100% of our kids in level four, that's just not reality. But to have a more even balance throughout would, would be like, so it's just some things that stood out to me as I was going through these, that there's very little reference to state assessment results in the, in the ARC, in the narrative, and I looked at the data and, and a majority of these districts have less than 10% of their student population in, in level four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ben, good, good questions. Because my question is, who evaluates the evaluator?
Who evaluates the ARC?
Yeah, the whole process. Well, I'll start with, first of all, this process, it's a kind of laborious, especially in smaller districts, you know, process. It's not terribly bad, but it, you know, with all the things we ask them to do, it does take a lot of time, effort, and energy to put this ARC, you know, together and put the report together, and, you know, not that it's not valuable. But how do we know, how do we know that what we're asking them to do is valuable to them, to us? I mean, we're making an assumption because we're asking them to evaluate themselves, and then we evaluate them, that it must all work? I don't know. I'm just asking a question about evaluating the evaluator. And I don't mean the person, I mean the system that we've created.
Yes.
Yes. So that would be, and is it, is it helpful to the districts? Is it helpful to us? Or is it just a way that we're checking off a box that everybody does it and we feel better about it? And I'm asking for your, to justify us or to answer that question, but I would like to get some kind of report back sometime about, did this thing really work? Because I remember being on the team with you when we started this, you know, we were going to try some new things, you know? And by the way, have we, where are we in the process? Do we still have like a couple hundred to go, or are we almost done, or?
I think we've got a ways to go.
I think so.
I think we've got a ways to go.
But it might be a good time to do a dipstick and find out where we are, is this working? And the best way to do that is to ask people in the field to see how the department's using it, how we're using it, just asking a question of, is it working?
And that's a question we have asked. This spring, we did some, several focus groups. So at some point in the near future, I'd love to bring that to the board.
That'd be good.
Yep.
You know, and is it really working? And by the way, from what Dr. Watson presented us this morning, the growth in scores and achievement and the things that we're valuing, it's growing. But is it growing because of this or in spite of this? I'm just asking a question, because this takes a lot of work on the part of districts, especially mid and small districts, just a lot of energy that could be someplace else. Not that it isn't right, but we should be able to justify, and we should evaluate our own processes in light of we're asking them to evaluate theirs.
Yeah, and so that's, that's why we went and had these focus groups, was really an evaluation of school improvement. And we got a lot of great feedback, and we're, you know, we aren't there yet, but we have plans to take action on all of those, the major topics that were brought forward as far as areas of, for improvement for us. And so we're taking that very seriously. And at some point, I'd love to present that to the board and some of the things that we're doing in response to that feedback. And, and we're looking at all aspects of school improvement, right? We're, everything about accreditation and design, including the role of the OVT, including the role of the, the ARC, KSTE's role. So those are all under a microscope right now as we move forward.
Good to hear, thank you.
Anne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Jay. I think sometime it'd be good, well, when you come back to cover things, to talk about what you and Myron were explaining to me about reducing the duplication each year because, as we talked, it is laborious, but if we can reduce that so they're not repeating the same stuff every year, that'd be helpful.
Yes.
But we're not, kind of follow up on what Jim was saying, we're not done with KISA. It's not going away. It's the only thing we have on the books, the only thing that's in regulations, it is the law of the land, but we can, we can fix some things. My question really, though, goes back to what you were saying about when they look at, they look at like levels three and four and whether or not they increased. It seems to me like for most of our particularly urban districts, it would be more important to look at, how many people did you move from one to two?
I would say all districts would want to look at that. We've, we've had several check-ins with systems, individual check-ins this summer with systems, and to a district, all 20 are very concerned, they're, they're concerned with all of their students' performance, that they're very concerned, especially with the, the percentage of students in level one.
Right.
And moving them into level two.
So why wouldn't that be rather than increase in three and four?
Well.
And increase in level two?
So the ARC looks at that accountability report as it stands now. They don't just look at levels three and four to make an determination on accreditation. They'll look at all their levels. You can see that on the back of that. So they, we want to make sure the ARC's, the reason those threes and fours are listed on the front is because that's our state goal, right? 70 to 75%.
Right.
So, but on the back are all levels, the percentages of all levels.
Uh huh.
In all three tested areas, and the ARC needs to look at that. And we make sure that they do as they go through, coach them up to look at that.
I.
And it, and sorry, it just doesn't, it doesn't, just because our state goal is three and four does not mean that the district has to have a goal for threes and fours, right?
You got to get to two before you can get to three.
Right, that's right.
Well, the only other thing was, I know there've been more than one and more than two and more than quite a few districts where we've said, results aren't where we want them to be, and I know COVID was a factor, but they weren't where we wanted them to be before COVID. But they have a process in place, we believe in the process. What concerns me is that we're not maybe taking a look a couple of years later to see if the process worked, because if it didn't, I don't want to wait five years to find out, oops, we accredited them and the process didn't work.
I think that's one of the major reasons that when we asked, one of the areas for improvement is systems, to their credit, said, we want yearly check-ins. We, now, they have OVTs, but the OVT process is really was that check-in for years one through four. And if you're, if there were struggles with that OVT, so these yearly check-ins can help with that, keep them on a process, keep them moving forward, because you're looking at your results, and then that justifies and says a lot about the process that you're, that you're getting in place. But those yearly check-ins are really important.
But is there something in place that says, okay, I've checked in two years in a row, things aren't getting any better, we need to revisit their accreditation?
Absolutely, the regulations, the way they're written allows for that.
But do we do it?
No, we, we.
I'm asking that we do that because for any of them, we said, your results aren't good, we're not seeing improvement, but we like the process that within a couple of years, we have a formal follow-up.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Michelle?
Yeah, is it, oh, there we go. Okay, could you go back to the threes and fours comparing to, did you say you're comparing like, like a local map test? Did you say you were looking at threes and fours with the local district? And then, what did you say about threes and fours, and then it's consistent with the, some of the local testing that they're doing in the district? You were comparing those scores, or?
So on the accountability report itself, it shows the systems' level three and four percentage for kids, at levels three and four on all three tested areas, and it compares the district to the state.
Yeah, so what?
So that's, but that's one thing, right? So what systems will actually do is in the narrative part of the KISA app, they will share their fast bridge results, their map data, they'll, they'll share all that. Now, we don't, the ARC will look at some of that local assessment data, right, if they have questions about what they're seeing on the accountability report. But that's, that's just how that generally lines out. If the district wants to compare their map scores to their state assessment scores, that's, that's really at the district level for that to happen.
So you're not, I was just curious if, if one was higher than the other, like, repeat, like, because it seems like the children or the students are saying, I really want to do well in my district, I really want to show that I can do this, and then they're like getting to the state assessments, like, I don't get a grade, I don't really, you know, ah. It's like, they're tested so much, and then they get to that, and it doesn't, they're not as excited about maybe what they're doing in their own district, because they probably think, I'm getting compared to my peers, and that's more important there, I think, with a lot of kids than getting compared with the state, because everything, every district's different.
Right.
And so unique. So I just was curious, if you're looking at threes and fours, and I just wondered how those results, because I was wondering if the districts were, were higher than the state assessments, just because more people participate than they do in the state assessments.
It's, it depends on the district and how they work through that, but yeah, we've seen districts that their formative assessment scores, like on a map or a fast bridge, are actually higher. They don't correlate with where they are on state assessments, right? You can even say that with ACT. We've seen some districts that have a very high composite ACT score, but their state assessments lag behind the state and vice versa. So it's really just looking at as much of the whole picture as possible to make sure that, you know, we're getting as much information that the system can provide to look at that whole picture if we're talking specifically about academics.
I would say, I'd say that goes down to the individual and how, how important it, I mean, it is to the family, the kid, everything, so that, it's good, it's good to talk that through, because I want to, because I just know in my own personal snapshot, just looking at, just looking at the district I'm in and what those kids, and just some of the, just from hearing from them and what they're talking about, or my own kid. So they, they take certain things more seriously than maybe others, so.
Oh, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Just wanted, thank you so much.
So one of the things that I think we constantly think about is, let's go back to the general public and some comments that you often hear, why don't we just hammer these people? So we have never wanted to be a state that was a gotcha system. It's an improvement. It's an improvement system. And if you remember, some of you that were on the board a while, there was a no child, there was a, there was a QPA period of time, this is in the late eighties through the mid nineties, where it was based upon a state assessment score and two local pieces of academic data. That's what it was based on. That was set aside when no child left behind at the federal level came in and said, everyone has to be 100% proficient by, I think it was 2014, 2012, 2014. And so that became the goal then for every state, and you had to adjust and do that. As that system started to fall apart nationally, we were looking at a new accreditation system for what it was going to look at, and we weren't ready, and the board had not approved one. So for a number of years, we approved every system to be approved as accredited. If you look at that, so Craig is a great example, Superintendent Haven, who was a principal in a redesigned school. If you go back, though, Craig was a teacher at best when, when the last time that Haven was going through an accreditation process. So we have a whole group of principals and superintents that don't know about accreditation. So what Jay and Myron have been trying to do is walk through a process and a product in this first cycle. The second cycle becomes much more about execution of that process and results, if that makes sense. Because, and then they're gonna, they're wrestling with what the cycle, what's the length of the cycle and what's the feedback. But you don't have to look very far to Kansas City, Missouri, to find out what happens when the state takes over a school system. So our, our goal is to improve school systems. You have some incentives and you have a hammer. You have both. And the question is, how do we help school districts improve, like we shared with Dodge City today, and that's just one example, so that thousands of more kids have opportunities than do today? And that's why, I know you're all struggling with that, right? How do we do that for every school district? And I know that, that they're trying to wrestle with that, too.
Yep. Thank you.
See, no more questions. A motion will be in order.
Is this 13?
It's 13.
Well, it says received in June, but.
That's, that's, that was correct. We corrected that in minutes.
Do I have to read all these?
Yes.
Okay. It's moved, dang. It's moved that Kansas State Board of Education accept the recommendations of the Accreditation Review Council and award the status of accredited to USD 103 Shilene, USD 215 Lakin, USD 246 Northeast, USD 247 Cherokee, USD 248 Gerard, USD 255 South Barber, USD 264 Clearwater, USD 265 Goddard, USD 266 Mays, USD 271 Stockton, USD 283 Elk Valley, USD 305 Salina, USD 310 Fairfield, USD 315 Colby, USD 316 Golden Plains, USD 326 Logan, USD 344 Pleasanton, USD 373 Newton, USD 400 Smoky Valley, USD 436 Caney Valley, USD 438 Skyline, USD 447 Cherryvale, USD 467 Leoty, USD 476 Copeland, USD 487 Harrington, USD 501 Topeka, USD 511 Attica, Z 69001 Brookridge Day School, Z 00298434 Bishop Ward High School, Z 00298999 St. James Academy, Z 00299892 Corpus Christi Catholic School, Z 30000 Salina Diocese.
I didn't catch all that. Would you repeat that, please, Anne?
Do I need to read the, oh.
Is there?
Are we gonna do?
Are we doing both at the same time, or there's two motions?
Okay. Just one motion. It is moved that, I also moved that the Kansas State Board of Education accept the recommendations of the Accreditation Review Council and award the status of conditionally accredited to USD 209 Moscow and USD 480 Liberal.
Is there a second to that motion? Deana seconds that motion. Any further discussion? See, none. A motion is in order, the motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Abstain? Was that nine, one? Is that right? Okay. Thank you. And I believe you're next.
Yes, these are just, very quickly, we have four systems to share with the board as receive items for their accreditation. You should have these reports on these systems and then looking at action in September. So 260 Derby, Sacred Heart Elementary in Emporia, it's a private system. And then these are two redeterminations. So these were systems that were in year five a year ago, and they were conditionally accredited at that time, and they, since that time, have gone through the process and have, the ARC has reviewed what they've put together in response to the conditionally accredited status, and the ARC is recommending both 381 Spearville and 456 Meridazine Valley for full accreditation. Those will be action items.
In September.
In September.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
I thank you. Receive information on appointed members to the new Kansas Children's Vision Health and School Readiness Commission. I assume that the presenter is going to be Dale. Tell us everything we need to know.
I will give it my best shot. So I'm standing in place of Dr. Neinswander today, who has been called to other duties. So I'll present some information to you concerning the Children's Vision Health School and Readiness Committee. I think they might have a PowerPoint for me that they're working up, but it's basically information that you should have in your packet, from what I understand. And so I'll just read just a few things for your review. But Senate Bill 62 is the driving force. It is amending KSA 726242. And so it's basically information that's going to provide basic vision screening without charge for students participating in IDA Part B programs and at least once each school year for grades K through three, five, seven, and 10. These are things that we typically do in our schools already, and then also within the first year of admission to the schools or new to a school system. And so every student enrolled in a school district or in accredited non-public should be provided a basic vision screening test, and so that will be completed through this as well. And it's going to be designated screener by the district, that they would actually be the ones participating or taking care of that. And then the screener must follow the most recent guidelines for the vision screening. And so we're getting closer to where the rubber meets the road here. And the results of the screening would be provided to the parents of the student if it is necessary. And so here they come. And I think we're right there. Okay. And then if necessary, the student would be referred to the appropriate eye doctor as such. That way, the student is provided the opportunity for good vision and helping them achieve educational mastery and if needed to be. So then, here's where it comes in, that the Kansas Children's Vision Health and School Readiness Commission is going to be formed. And those members of that committee are going to be appointed by the State Board of Education, you. And so we'll look at those. And we'll start with the duties of this commission. The duty will oversee the revision of the screening requirements and so forth. Of course, you're going to have help from many individuals, people who will be in the profession. You will be responsible for providing a formal letter that schools can use for the examination reports as far as referring them to those professionals. You will help identify the resources that families will need to conduct the proper eye care for their child. And it'll also establish a system to collect that data for the health personnel that they need. And then you'll also need to issue a annual report to the Secretary of Health as well as to Commissioner Watson. And the people on that committee who are going to help you, and the commission is going to be comprised of these individuals, an optometrist, ophthalmologist, a health organization dedicated to preventing blindness, you're going to have one of you sitting on that committee or that commission, and then a representative of the Kansas State Department of Health and Environment, a school nurse, Kansas State Department of Ed is you, I guess, I'm sorry, and then a school nurse, a public health nurse, and then one school administrator as well. And so that's the task that's presented to you by Senate Bill 62. It's a very brief introduction. From my understanding, I'm supposed to turn it over to Chair Porter and Commissioner Watson.
I'm concerned with the last statement. These people are supposed to come to Topeka, do a lot of work, and not be reimbursed.
Yeah, and I didn't mention that. That was, and that is specifically stated in, in the bill as such. Members are not to be reimbursed for any of the meeting expenses. That is clearly stated in there. Thanks for pointing that out, Chair Porter.
Well, I bet people are going to rush for that. Yeah. That really concerns me. We expect, don't we pay at least Mollie's, everybody else that comes for various meetings? Well, I know you're too close to pay, Anne, but.
No, I mean, I was thinking the Native American education.
Okay. How do we go, okay, how do we go about doing this? I'm wondering. Randy, what's your, who do we contact, you know?
Well, you have to comprise the committee made up of these people. So you have to determine one school nurse, as an example. So as you can see, many of these are obviously represented from the Kansas State Department of Education. We can help you with that one pretty easy. We can get you that one. And we can, we can obviously reach out to the school nurses organization, but public health nurse, ADHD, we'd have to reach out and get you some people that maybe would be willing to volunteer, to be on it, that have some expertise in this area. And then you would have to choose. Or you may know someone in your area that's an optometrist or ophthalmologist that you'd like to nominate.
Well, I'm assuming that the optometrists and the ophthalmologists have their own association of some sort. Would that be accurate?
I believe so, yes.
And perhaps we need to reach out to them and let them recommend.
And speaking as far as school nurses, you might be able, I know they have an organization as well, and that may be another opportunity there for a school nurse.
Well, then unless I'm told otherwise by my colleagues, then we will reach out to the various organizations and ask them to make recommendations and bring those back to us. Because quite frankly, I'm not, I know one ophthalmo, I actually know two ophthalmologists and one optometrist. And so I'm not capable of, not competent to determine beyond that, you know, narrow view, so. So that's what we'll do. We'll reach out to each one of those organizations and ask them to make recommendations with the understanding of what the responsibilities are. And they may, and they may need to be from Topeka since they're not going to get paid.
Or they consume.
Yeah, or they consume, yeah. So that's what we'll do. Ben, go ahead.
This is just an inquiry, because I know we see it on other commissions and boards that we appoint people to. Don't we already have like a nomination system kind of in place internally? That we announce openings for certain boards or commissions, like Professional Standards Board, that sort of thing?
Well, we do, but they don't go to the optometrist associations.
I know. I'm not saying that we don't do that. It's a good idea. I was, I would suggest that myself to those organizations, but in terms of how.
Usually, we try to have a fair distribution between the state board regions around Professional Standards Board, for example, when there's an opening. In this case, it's a little different because you're choosing from organizations and medical people, so it's, I mean, you can look at distribution, but this is, I'll come back. Dale's showing you this because this is in law. This is the law that was given to you to execute. So remember, there's that duty. Here's your constitutional duties and other things given by the Kansas Legislature to you. Well, this is one that they gave you. So Deana, I don't know if you've been, because you guys, I'm sure, worked on this.
Oh, I know, Deana has, I know it's one that we supported. We talked with John Harding, School for the Blind, about it, and he was supportive. It mirrors something that the deaf and hard of hearing community already have. This just creates it for blind visually impaired. So I think it's a good thing going forward. I'll let Deana jump in.
I'm not in any way saying that I'm opposed to it. I think it's a good idea. Let's just, we want to make sure we do it right. Deana?
This bill has been around for several years, and it was put together by a group of optometrists, ophthalmologists, and also school nurse. And there was a legislator involved, and because they were from Salina, some of them, they involved me. So it was their determination that they did not think they should be reimbursed for meeting expenses, so that component was something they chose to put in the bill. And so that's not a, something the legislature decided to do to them. It was their decision.
So when it's somebody from here.
And there were.
Contact these people.
Health organizations that prevent blindness that were involved in it. So I think there's some folks out there that would love to serve on this. So I don't know that we'll have that much difficulty once you contact the organizations.
Well, we'll reach out to the various organizations. Somebody from here will have to have that responsibility.
In fact, John was involved, so I think he would even know who some of those folks were.
Okay. Well, thank you. All right, well, go ahead, Anne.
So the bill didn't say anything about distributing these positions geographically?
No, it did not.
Did it say who would share it? Because I see we're not on it.
No, it does not, not that I'm aware of. Not anything on the chair.
I would assume we'll have a liaison, but they won't be voting because they're not on the commission.
I don't think there was anything in there about the, from what I remember, it just says, so we go back. This basically is what the duties of the commission are. It didn't go into any guidelines to what any bylaws or what any rules of operation or anything of that nature would be. It just, you know, is just overseeing the revision of the screening requirements, screening referral letters, just taking a look at those and creating them for districts, identifying state resources. I would imagine that some of our professional organizations that would become a part of that would have ways to push that information out as well and have other opportunities as far as what resources are there. It didn't provide anything that I had seen in there as far as any of that, as far as the distinction to that.
Any of these reporting requirements, a lot of times, let's say, we want to hear back by January 15th of next year, nothing on who they're to report to or when?
I don't think so, not that I've read. I can look here real quick. I know the next section is on the school of the, I believe it's, as far as interpreter and things like that, I would just have to look into that a little bit more.
Okay. I just found it odd, they said we had to do it, but we're not actually on it, or there's no reporting requirements, which was.
And typically, an organization.
Annual report.
Issues, annual report to the Secretary of Health, Environment, and the Commissioner of Education.
So they report to us, but that's it?
And typically, when an organization like this is established, and there are no rules to the contrary, the group elects its officers.
So they'll just pick one? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And we will reconvene at five minutes after three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Commissioner Watson. We only have one case before you, sorry, she on the?
She's trying to keep on that.
Okay.
Anyway, sorry, the Chair of the PPC is in the process of coming online in case you have any questions for her. There was only one case that's brought to you that's been received by the PPC so far. They've made the recommendation that you have in front of you to deny the pending application for someone asking for an emergency substitute teaching license. I can answer procedural questions for you, or if you have specific questions for the Chair of the PPC, I believe they're working on getting her on shortly. I suppose I could also share while Eric is doing that. You have in the packet, but to clarify for the record, as you are aware, anyone that applies for a license that has an issue with their background goes before the Professional Practices Commission, which then makes a recommendation by way of an initial order. If either party does not agree with the recommendations in the initial order, they may file briefs with the state board, they may ask oral argument, giving reasons as to why you should not follow the recommendations of the Professional Practices Commission. In this particular case, the applicant did file such a response, I believe it was a one-page response, essentially asking for another hearing. I filed a response on behalf of the department, asking you to follow the recommendations of the PPC. Neither party asked for an oral, the opportunity to present oral argument.
Okay, we had this information in our packet. Does anybody have any questions, or can we just go ahead and have a motion? It's up to you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is our decision here appealable, or is that not appealable?
So like any action that is made by the State Board of Education, the Kansas Judicial Review Act makes that something that can be appealed to district court in Shawnee County. I have been here for 10 years. There have been exactly one case that was ever actually appealed to district court. Two, but one of them was dismissed because they filed it two days too late.
And what was the disposition of that?
The one that actually was appealed to district court...
She's trying to get a message.
She's here.
She's on. That one case was appealed to district court. The board was represented by an Assistant Attorney General, and I believe that there were settlement agreements, and it kind of worked out in the middle.
Okay. I understand this was on the emergency substitute license, but if the same individual had, again, applied for a different type of substitute license, would the process start all over again then?
If someone applies for a license after the state board makes a decision on this, if you follow the recommendations of the Professional Practice Commission and deny the application, the person could turn around and apply again for, they could apply again for a license.
And then the process starts all over?
That's correct.
Well, welcome. Sorry we had a miscommunication. Anything you need to tell us about this case?
You're going to have to tell me which case. If you give me the case number, I'll tell, but I doubt I have anything to add. Generally, we have our, it would be more if you have questions for me.
Scott will tell you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Jen, I don't have the case number in front of me.
No, we probably do.
Twenty-two PPC sixteen.
Twenty-one PPC sixteen.
I do not have any, oh, there we go. Hold on, let me see. Oh, did you have any questions for me? I know we have a written summary in the notes. I'm so sorry, this was not on my calendar in August, it's a bit of a hectic month, but I know that was a case we felt pretty strongly about, but I assume it's in the summary that's in your minutes.
Jen, I'll just share with you, I went ahead, I don't know how much of that you heard. I summarized procedurally where we were on this particular case. I have not gotten into any of the facts of the case because they are summarized both in the initial order and then the applicant's written brief, and then my response to that brief.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead.
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law of the Professional Practices Commission and deny the application in case twenty-one PPC sixteen.
Sir, second, Deana, second to the motion. Ben, were you going to make a motion, or were you...
I was to make a motion.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Not all in favor, anything? All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, motion carries unanimously, and thank you. Next time, we'll try, we'll try to skip August, so.
Thank you, Jen.
We'll put things up.
Special Education Advisory Council Quarterly Update. Tobias Wood, welcome, sir.
Welcome. Thank you very much. How are you all doing today?
We're surviving.
So I am the new Vice Chair for CAC. We had our first in-person meeting since I've been a part of the group in, just at the Leadership Conference just a couple weeks ago. So it's a pleasure to be here for you. Basically, the quarterly update is just that. We're just basically letting you know what we've been doing in the past, in this quarter. So April agenda items, you can see on the screen, nothing, nothing too wild in there. There is, some of the pieces that I am particularly proud of are the Graduation Task Force Committee. That is some really interesting information that's been coming through. Both Trish Bachman and Jim McNeese are part of that. There's some really great information that's coming from that. This is, in addition to April, at the very end, is just the ex officio groups. The July agenda items, this is the group that we had in person. We didn't have enough people there to have a quorum, which is interesting because we're, apparently, meeting remotely was very convenient to get everybody together, and we did not have everybody together that time, but we did, we were able to review some items, specifically the new bylaws for some of the new members, and then that agenda review with Bert. And then we got to hear that Graduation Task Force report from Tricia and Jim McNeese. For September, coming up, we've got just this ESI final regulations review, clarification on seclusion. So we have also the low incidence teacher license request for flexibility in licensure. Apparently, you guys are already deep into that. Then we'll have that Graduation Task Force report, Transition Council report, Membership Committee, which I'm part of, and we have a vacancy in the Special Education Administrator. And then we're going to review the differentiated monitoring plan for the federal year for twenty-two and twenty-three.
Can you give us a little bit more information about the clarification of seclusion?
Yeah, so I have a little bit more about that, not a lot. I've got, I've got Bert here to help fill in some of the gaps. So the, for the seclusion piece, let me find that. Basically, it's, they were looking at finding how that we are able to, with those ESI regulations, decide how that's going to be implemented. Did you have something to add to that?
The only concern that was brought up is that Dr. Marvin Miller is asking about when is timeout, timeout, and when is it seclusion? Because the way the regulations were explained to us, what used to not be considered a seclusion will now be considered a seclusion and be reportable. And so we're going to be asking for some clarification when we meet in September about when is seclusion, seclusion, and when is a timeout permitted? Because it was a little confusing to our membership, because they were invited to attend the entire July Leadership Conference, and those that did heard the report that was given by Scott Gordon, and it caused some questions. And so we just want to sit down as a group, we want to discuss that. If we need Scott there, we'll ask Scott to be there, but we need to get some clarification for the field on how those regulations will impact current practices compared to past practices.
And if that was the interpretation, that is exactly the opposite of what we anticipated, what we intended. We intended to make it easier to do nonviolent things, so that there are room, places in the back of a classroom where kids can go voluntarily, where kids can go to cool down, that do not have anything to do with the, with the safety of themselves or others, an actual timeout. And we, the purpose, you know, I'm heavily involved in this.
I know.
The purpose of the whole process was to make it clearly understandable that timeout is not seclusion, and unless it meets the other standards of seclusion, like danger to oneself or others, it's, it's a place for a kid to go and cool off if they need to, to avoid the need for restraint or seclusion, or any sort of disciplinary action. So that's the purpose, and if it comes out something other than that, I need to know.
I appreciate that, Jim, because the other Jim should be in attendance, and we'll be able to help us to sift through that. And then if we need to have Scott Gordon there, we can invite him to attend as well. But I wanted to clarify that to you, that it was a little confusing on the way he explained different examples on whether or not it would be considered a seclusion if the child was taken from the classroom for some reason and was down the hall and escorted, and even if someone was with the child, that would be considered a seclusion.
Well, and to answer that, there were, there were times when people were not reporting them because it says, you know, had to be isolated, and a paraprofessional might be put in the room to observe him because that paraprofessional was there. I mean, a legitimate seclusion was not reported because there was a person in the room with him to observe him, because you also are required to observe him. So that was a loophole that needed to be closed. So, you know, none of this is, all this is complicated. But, so that was a purpose of all of this, to make sure that we didn't not report because of that technicality. But that's a whole, whole different thing between a seclusion and timeout, which in many cases can be voluntary on the part of the student.
We just need to get that clarified, Jim, so the field and the agency has a clear picture of how we can provide that support to the field and our CAC members on the difference between the two, and that's what we'll be clarifying.
And this is not a quick thing. Betty and I were on the original ESI Task Force, and that was eight years ago, and we're still doing it.
And it might be coming back, too.
Well, thank you, Bert.
While you're on this subject, can you give us an update on the Transition Coordinating Council? I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is also near and dear to my heart.
No, no. What we've done is Stacy Martin, Wendy, Fritz and I, before Wendy left, we had looked at how we could really build capacity around transition in our state. And we realized there were agencies providing supports to school districts, but it was piecemeal. It wasn't something that had any continuity or consistency to it. So we decided, rather than having another Transition Council, we would try to form a Coordinating Council, so that we have players at the table like PRIETS, who are supposed to have an open invitation to support students if the student qualifies. And they have now ten regional support workers that can provide that opportunity. We're working with KU, who's going, hired a new person through a grant, who's going to provide a map of the state and where different supports can be located for different school districts and families. So that person's involved. We also have a person from the National Transition Council who's helping us to facilitate our meetings and take notes, and we set goals and target those. And I can get you more information on that at a later meeting if you like. But the idea is we're really building coordination around transition, because that is my passion. Because it doesn't make any difference how well a child scores on anything if they can't find a job or find success beyond the school doors. So that has been what I have been preaching since I got here, and that's why transition had fallen to the wayside a little bit, and now we're prioritizing that as our top priority. So that's what Stacy Martin truly is doing, is building that capacity around how we can help students to be more successful once they get out of school through coordinating with those service providers that can help the students to access the services that they can qualify to receive.
I'll try not to interrupt anymore.
That's okay.
One last thing, not getting away that easy. I also, myself and Trish gave Bachman a report on the Graduation Task Force, reassuring the CAC and the education, and special education community that there's not going to be wholesale changes. In fact, we're probably basing regular graduation on special education processes and plans, namely the IEP, Individual Education Plan, as opposed to the IPE, Individual Plans. We've got all these acronyms.
IPE.
And that really, special education has been a template for how we're moving forward with graduation requirements.
I might also add that with the, with that, the work with the Transition Group, so we reviewed a document that all parents will get during an IEP to include what is next for transition. And we noticed that there wasn't anything in there about four-year college. We also noticed there wasn't anything in there about military, so we added some things there. We also added some QR codes to that, so someone can just snap a picture of that and go to the source of the resources that they might need. So on the 2022 Annual Performance Report, the SETS team will be addressing the data collection to support the twenty-two data that will be used for the twenty-three submissions to the Office of Special Education Programs. And two indicators will require CAC approval regarding the changes being recommended for the collection of these data. They are indicator eight, parent engagement, and indicator fourteen, transition. And this, you have something else, Bert?
I just wanted to clarify that the reason that we're changing that is we have cohorts, three of them, where we've divided all the districts into three cohorts. And so what we do is we collect data from that cohort for parent engagement and also for transition. We weren't getting many back. We were trying to predict, you know, what was the progress we were making based upon a very small N. And so we're opening it up to all students. So we will be opening it up, instead of doing cohorts, we'll be doing all, so that the entire state dissipates in the stakeholder engagement and also in the transition, so that we'll have better data and we can better predict where we need to move with our programs and our services.
And Bert includes this slide in everything that we do, and it's a good reminder that this is why we do what we do, is we keep the main thing the main thing. So, and these are all individuals that are affiliated with CAC members, correct?
They are affiliated with KSDE employees.
Oh, very good.
So they voluntarily gave us pictures, and we use them liberal.
Yeah, very good. Are there any other questions?
What do you do when you're not working for CAC?
I work for the Kansas Board of Regents.
Okay.
I'm with the higher ed workforce development team.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll go ahead, Melanie.
There we go, that sounds a little better. It wasn't in your slides, but I just want to follow up. There was a conversation with the Kansas State School for the Blind about adding some verbiage to the bottom of the IEP form regarding parental rights. Does that fall under this umbrella, or is that just a department thing?
That will fall under this, and it is a department thing, and it's a way for parents that have a deaf or hard-of-hearing child to recognize that they do have a support network through the School for the Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing. And so we will be adding information to some form within our IEP process. It might be the prior written notice where we list DRC and we list families together, but to have a state school listed for the blind and also for the deaf hard-of-hearing, so that those parents that need to contact someone to get some support for that disability that they can call and they can ask for that support. So yes, we're working on that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any questions?
I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Appreciate it. Okay, John, it's all yours. Did you bring a support system?
I did. I brought my kiddos. Absolutely. Hey, good morning, every...
Hey, good morning, every, or good afternoon, everybody. I'm glad to be here. Um, we're excited at the, the Safe and Secure School Center for school to get started. Uh, we're actually, I'm leaving from here to go to, back to meet the teacher night. So I'm, I'm incredibly excited to meet our educators, uh, who are going to be teaching my kiddos. And, and so beyond grateful to have the opportunity to be here and speak to you today, uh, about things that, that aren't just locks and cameras, uh, that we can do to keep our schools safe. Um, I just want to throw out there, and you guys know this, but there is no check one box and we fix everything. Uh, no matter what a vendor tells you, no matter what somebody tells you, there's not a, if you check this box, you will fix everything. Uh, and so that's not something that we, we push. Uh, we promote collaboration at the local level to make sure that all players are involved so that we can continue the safety of our kiddos. Uh, the big question is, is how do we identify an active assailant? When we talk about school safety, there, in the state of Kansas, we have 22 recognizable hazards. Active assailant is not one of them, but that is always the one that we get asked about. And so we pull from the Department of Homeland Security, from the Secret Service, and this is what they say. Uh, there's no profile. It has been, uh, high, high achieving kids, it's been poor performers, it's been, uh, who, people who were loners and socially isolated, and those who were well-liked and popular. Uh, that tends to scare a lot of people. And I understand that because we can't predict it. But what I can tell you is the number one thing that we can do to keep our schools safe, not only here in the state of Kansas, but nationwide, is that we have to build and maintain positive relationships with our students. A study finds that 92% of the time, another student noticed concerning behaviors and didn't report it. That same study says that at least one person noticed a concerning behavior in every active assailant's life. So we have got to create, build, and maintain those positive relationships with our youth so that they have somebody that they can go to. They don't have to wait to get home to tell a parent who hopefully they trust. They don't have to wait to call a hotline. But if they feel comfortable in doing so, we have that as well. The goal is to make sure that these people have a trusted adult they can go to, uh, who can prevent these situations from happening. And we see that across the states. We see that here in Kansas. We are stopping these incidents because we have fantastic educators who build those positive relationships. Um, these are two of, uh, my former high school kiddos when I was in SRO. One of them actually is a school teacher here in the state of Kansas, uh, and she just got married. Um, and they came out and would hang out with us every summer at our Sheriff's Kids Camp, and they would request to be in my group, uh, and I put them to work. Um, so that's, that's the goal, is that we build those trusted communications and, and trust relationships with our kiddos so that they feel comfortable coming and talking to us before an incident occurs and not after. Uh, studies show that there should be an option for passing information anonymously. Again, 92%, the study shows 92% of students knew something was going on. We want to make it as easy as possible to get that information to someone who can stop. Four years ago, we partnered with the Kansas Bureau of Investigations and came up with the Suspicious Activity Report. That's not just for school safety, that's for community safety as well. There's a section in there for school safety, but it's a QR code, it's a website that you scan, you text. It looks like you're texting. And you send that off, and it is vetted by KBI analysts who then push it back to the local level, whether it be the local school district or whether it be local law enforcement there so that we can start helping. What we have seen, uh, as well with this is that we will get tips from here in Kansas about other states, and we will get tips from other states for Kansas. So this, these are talking together with other states, and it's actually prevented a lot of things. We also have a phone number, and this phone number has been in, in use for a very long time, the school safety hotline. Uh, we're in the middle of almost kind of rebranding another poster. We had that Choose Piece Report poster that was out about two, three years ago. Uh, we're going to be, uh, rebranding that a little bit, changing some things around. Uh, talks right now, uh, the Attorney General is looking at releasing a, a app for suicide prevention, uh, and we want to partner with that so that we can push that out, uh, and get 24/7 help for our kiddos who are feeling like that as well. Uh, students themselves must be part of the solution. I go around the state of Kansas and I go nationally, and I tell people all the time, change has to be student-led. When our kids buy into the process and they create the process, they are the ones who can change the world. It's not up to me. I'm too old. And I'm older than all of you on the board, and, and so that's nothing against you guys. But we know that about we know about second second semester, seventh grade year, kids stop going to adults and they start going to their friends. And those friends are going through the same life struggles that they are, but that's who they're relying on to base their decisions and their actions on. And so we want to make sure that we empower the kids, that when something's going on in their schools or in their community, they are the ones who know that they are powered to make that change. And so we know that we have to be, we have to put kids as part of the solution. Mental health services. We started that mental health intervention team program five years ago. Um, it's one in 10 youths in the United States experience a serious emotional disturbance, but only 20% of them receive the help that they need. Statistically, across this country, one in 13 of our youths will attempt suicide, not talk about, not plan, not tweet, but physically actually attempt suicide. And so when we go into schools and we talk to 260 kids, we know statistically speaking, 20 of them have attempted suicide. It's the number two leading cause of death of our kids. Number one is distracted driving. And so it's something that we, we truly need to address. Um, obviously, the stigma is obviously the reason that most people don't get the help that they need. Um, and again, we're in the fifth year of the Mental Health Intervention Team Program. Studies have shown that treatment is much more likely to be effective and completed if it's school-based. We're breaking down those barriers of, I don't have gas money, I can't take off work, we don't want the kiddo missing half a day or a full day of school. We're bringing those services into the school itself. Uh, currently, we have 67 districts and, and participating in that $10.5 million grant. We also have the School Safety Grant. Uh, it's a $5 million. It's been given out three separate times. Um, it is focused on infrastructure and cameras. The 2022 and 2023, the last year that we just got done funding, uh, included funds for a new school resource officer position as well. The concerns with that is that every year we've put this out, we've had over $10 million in requests. So we have a lot of districts who are unhappy when they request $200,000, and I give them $14,000. I get a lot of angry phone calls, a lot of phone calls and questions about what do I do now? And so we work with those districts, and I tell them it's almost like eating an elephant. How do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. So let's take care of one problem, let's take care of one building, let's take care of one thing right now that we can do. It's a matching grant, so that helps spread the wealth a little bit around as well. Uh, school districts are not comfortable with the quick turnaround. I get calls all the time, I can't take this to my board, I don't know how to do this. This year, the governor signed it on May 19th, and we had to have it back by June 10th so that we could process it, get it approved, and get the funds out to schools as soon as possible. It's a very, very quick turnaround. We would like to see, um, for this grant, for following years, that we need to expand the scope to include communications and training. We see in every, um, big event, communications is the first thing that breaks down. We have a lot of school districts who have the buzzers to enter, but our administrative assistants aren't getting the training that they need to know the questions to ask. So I will show up to a school and I'll buzz in, and they'll just let me in because they don't have the, they don't have the training and the know-how to ask the questions about who we're going to allow into our buildings. So for future monies, we'd love to see communications and training. And if we can get it more than just in the appropriations bill every year, give school districts time to get quotes available, to understand what they're needing, and then get it approved by their board so that they can go out and, and spend this money appropriately. I'm going to hand it over to Jim Green here real quick.
Yeah, thanks, John. Good afternoon. Jim Green, finally get to speak, see? School safety specialist here. Um, John, I said I'd be short with this because I love school safety. And, you know, one of the things when I go out and I, I sit down with the schools and I ask, before we do a SEPTED, I'll talk about that, that crime prevention through environmental design or, or, or a risk assessment, I ask them, what is school safety to you? And if I ask you here in this group, what is school safety, I may come up with several different answers. It really is the condition of the heart. What's happened at that moment in your, in your, in, in your school? Was it a tornado? Was it an active assailant who came in? You know, was it, was it drugs or alcohol that's being used in your school? Is it bullying? What is school safety? And you have to address that to figure out what the priorities are, because if you don't, you know, then you're going to be all over the, all over the page. So we want to make sure that they understand what school safety is. And with that, then what you have to look at is this, is that we have 22 hazards identified within Kansas. That's a lot. You know, John goes to a conference and, where'd you go? Las Vegas or something like that? And we, we shared a, uh, you know, he was a guy, and we talked about that, and he said, you have 22 hazards in Kansas, and I can tell you as a former emergency manager and still hold that license, this is what we deal with on a day-to-day basis. You know, and as an emergency manager, you see this. I mean, from, and so not only do the schools have to identify what's going on in their schools, they also have to identify what is the hazard within their county. Some may overlap, they may have tornado issues, they may have, it may be next to a, a, you know, a nuclear station, a nuclear, and so they may have to deal with that. You know, what else do they have to deal with? So we have to sit down with them and say, what is your priority? So again, they're extreme. So we talk about all hazards and all hazard approaches. That's real big with FEMA as well as emergency management, and this is what schools are starting to see. Well, I need to take this all hazard approach that will address almost all of these in their, in their crisis management plans. The other one is to, how do we assess this? This is through a threat, threat assessment or what we call a THIRA. And a THIRA basically takes from the lowest to the high, to the, to the most severe. What is, what is most important to you? And if it's, hey, we just got hit with a tornado twice. So that, that on that threat assessment's going to be high. You know, is it, you know, is it, is it, is it terrorism? You know, they'll say, well, Jim, we live way out in Western Kansas, we're okay. But tornado and drought and wildfires are our biggest concern. Great, let's address that. The most popular one right now is the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design or the SEPTEDs. And we're very busy going to schools and doing this, and these take full days. You know, and this will address, this includes lighting, windows, good line of sight, you know, clear walkways, signage, entrances and exits, parking lots, uh, around the school and so on. And so schools really, this is something that schools can just dive right into. You know, they don't have to have a lot of money to do this, just by changing on a lightbulb from regular lighting to an LED lighting, they can, they can start taking vegetation away from their windows so they have a really clean line of sight. Now, these things are what's important for the schools. And they say, I know it takes time, but boy, the schools that I have talked to with, I'd already been through, in fact, I'm like John, when I leave, uh, when I get done here, I've got two of the SEPTEDs for schools I've, I've got to go do. You know, and they do take time. They take an all-day event, but it's, makes me feel real good that they're in this. And they take it very serious now. They walk through the schools with us, and they say, yeah, we can do that. You know, and, and that's just maintaining that. So it's that simple, and that's just a good step ahead. Some best practices we bring up to the schools, go, talk to other schools that have done this already. We tell if you don't have a crisis management plan or an emergency operation plan, create one. You know, and, and in your plan, put before, during, and after an incident. It's so important, what are you going to do? And I can tell you, I was also, as a former incident management team member for the state, I was on those teams that would rapidly go out there after tornadoes. We'd see schools, my, my job as a logistics chief and also ops chief would say, what's your plan? Several of them would say, I don't have a plan. Our school, we didn't review a plan. So that puts them behind. So we always tell them, what do you do before? Have you practiced it? What are you doing during? And then how about after? What's your recovery process? Also want them to form a planning team. That's so important. By forming a planning team, the, the, a crisis management, we want them to include from the janitor all the way up to psychologist and also include community responders such as first, uh, you know, the police department, fire, EMS, get them involved because that's what it's going to take. And bring them in as we do tabletop exercises. Talk about what, what's important to you. How are we going to respond? And let's do it before, you know, not during an incident, because that's not when you want to be handing out business cards. We want to have our, figure out a plan before. So this is starting, schools are starting to see this, especially after what happened down in Texas. And then best practice continues, establish a regular time to review. We see this, and we want them to continue on. We're starting to make phone calls and we'll say, hey, have you reviewed your plan lately? And we'll provide regular training. Now, this is important, especially on that, the FEMA cycle, love this, I love this graphic because if, if they follow this cycle, they'll make sure that, you know, are they designing and developing their plans? You know, are they, are they conducting a plan? Are they evaluating it? And that's why it's good to bring somebody in from the outside to say, hey, this is working, because it's hard to be a prophet in your own backyard, as they say. So the idea is making sure that somebody's looking at this, like John or myself, from an outside person, say, hey, look, we're not throwing your bus, but you need to make these changes in order to keep your kiddo safe. And in the, and so, and to conclude this is the steps and planning process that we take to the schools is real simple. We want them to form a collaborative team. We sit down with them. We want to understand the situation. What are your hazards? And what's important to you? Give me five, five hazards that are, you know, important to you. And again, and then we'll start developing your, we're helping you develop a plan around that. Then determine the goals and objectives. You know, how, what do you want to see done with this plan? Plan and development. Basically, how many resources can you actually activate your plan? Do you have the right amount of resources? You know, right now, it's staff limitation. And so that, that really limits their planning, so we have to say, can you water that down a little bit? But have a plan. Prepare, review, and approve the plan. That's where they start writing the plan as a group, and then the administrators approve it. And then, now, here's the one that John and I have real issues with, is the implement and maintain the plan. We see, we, I, I have a plan, it's all done, and I put it on the shelf, but I don't practice it. How many have heard that? Seen that? Yeah. You know, it's pretty bad when you sit down with them. I said, do you have a plan? He tells us like this, and he blows off the dust off his book, and I'm like, that's why you're here, to make sure that we start implementing that. So that, you know, that's important. And that's the key right there, is to maintain that plan. And if it doesn't fit, then let's change it. Let's change that process, let's change it. And we talk to them, we show them how easy it is to do that. I know they're, they're bogged down with other things they've got to do, from your credit validation process, and then to add this. But again, kids and teachers need to be safe and know that that door, those, those doors are locked and they're being secured. You know, same thing as your process in your home. You know, your home is safe. You go home at night, your doors are locked, you feel secure. I tell the teachers this, this is your home for eight hours, let's make sure we maintain that. You know, and, and, and it's a hard issue. Man, and I know they want to, they just don't know how, where to start. And so that's where we come into play. So what we look at here at the end, the end of this is school safety is a shared responsibility. It's shared by all of us, you know, in the community, not just on the teachers and the administrators. It needs to be shared, and that's why we bring in the community as a whole to say, what can we do? That's why we're doing tabletops. Now, that's why it's so important. John?
Ready?
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
No, no, it's, it, you were right. Come on up. Because actually, um, you said something that I was very glad to hear when you mentioned that, um, you know, students played a pivotal role in the success. And, um, I, I serve on the Student Voice Committee, so I had an opportunity to meet with STUCO leadership in Emporia. Oddly enough, that was something that was on their mind, on the minds of students, their safety. So my concern is, it starts out as a great idea up here, but by the time it's filtered down to schools to actually implement, it is so watered down. And as I was talking with the students, they're not aware, and it takes me back, this has been my theme all day, which is that disconnect. They're not aware that plans really are in place for their safety. That came up. The other thing that was really, um, interesting is, who do I talk to? Um, there were some students that, yeah, I have that great relationship with the teacher, but you know, it seems like for every student that has a great relationship with this, with the teacher, there's a student that does not. And so that line of communication is, is blurred there. Um, so when you're talking, I, I guess I want to know, first of all, with that long prelude, what steps do you recommend, um, that are put in place where students feel empowered and that they are an actual part of this process? I'd love to hear that, if you can address it.
Absolutely.
So thank you for the question. And I think you're absolutely right. When we start up top, it starts getting watered down and there's a disconnect. When I talk about empowering students, I think they should be a part of the process. I'm a big proponent. If you're going to interview for a school resource officer, why not have your STUCO president on there? Why not have somebody sitting on when you're going to hire a teacher? Give the students that buy-in. Give the students a voice and that, that can say, listen, this is what we need. When they go through the planning process and say, hey, this is our plans. You know, this is more than just a five-minute conversation now in the, in the first day of class. When we do these drills, we, we're required to do nine drills a year. After each drill, I, I, I tell our school districts, they need to be having a time where they can come back together and students can ask questions of their educators, of the teachers and go, I don't understand why we did this. Or why is it that this is the way it's done? Okay. We get that, that reunification there and we get to talk back and forth. If the, if the teacher can't answer that question, that's absolutely fine. That's when they go to their principal, they can go to the superintendent. And if nobody in that district can answer, maybe it's one time to change the plan. They can also contact us and we can talk to them about it as well. But I, I'm, I'm a big proponent of, like I said, I have a whole 45-minute-long presentation that I give to not only staff members, but I give to students as well about change is student-led. Be the voice, be the change that you want to see in that school district.
One point oh, so do you find that it's effective? I mean, you know, they hear you, but what kind of follow-through?
Absolutely. And we see that too. And I get, I get emails from districts after I go and present and say, listen, before, before you came in, we were having this issue. Two days later, we had a group of, of seniors come into the principal's office and say, we don't understand why this is going on. What do we need to do to change this? It's civil conversations that go back and forth. They're able to collaborate, make a plan, and then they're able to, to push that forward. So again, it's, it's going to be different for every school. It's going to be different for the type of response. But I'm a very, very firm believer in the studies show you have to include students in your discussions.
Anne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks for the presentation. That's really good. And I know Jean or somebody asked, or, you know, asked more about school safety. I had a friend whose grandkids are in Olathe and they wanted us to immediately order every district to put a metal detector in every door. And I said, that's probably not going to happen. But it's helpful to know more about the responsibilities. I was looking at our page on safe and secure standards and it really looks like the bulk of it falls on the local districts, which I think it really has to because they're from here to there on what they need and what's important. Like I said, some places it's fires and that kind of thing. And other places it might be a school, a school shooting. But it looks to me like it's up to the districts. I just checked and see if I got this right, to have a plan, to work it out. And it looks like it's our responsibility maybe to provide resources or training. My question is, do we do any oversight? I mean, do we check to make sure they have a plan and we're doing it?
So unfortunately, no, because it's not in legislation. So we tell districts and, and we go all over the state and say, you need to have a plan. If your crisis plan hasn't been updated in, in the last six months, you better update it. But we don't have any teeth that goes with that to, to mandate.
What's a Senate Bill 109 there? Isn't that federal mandate?
Senate, no. Senate Bill 109 was from the state legislature for the $5 million school safety fund. When you apply for that grant, you have to send us your crisis plan at that time. But I can tell you, and, and Jim can attest to it, the first year we did it, I got an eight-page crisis plan and I got a 700-page crisis plan. That's why we have that 70, it's about 76 pages. The template that's out there on our website that we, we encourage schools to go to and check their own plan against it. If they want to add things to it, they can. I mean, I got one on my desk right now that has three pages for a tsunami.
So since they have self-executing powers, does school safety not fall under operations of the Constitution? Could that not be part of it?
I'm not 100%. What I can tell you is that the only thing that we, that we really oversee is with the fire marshal and those are those nine school safety drills that they do every year. Other than that, we don't maintain any records or don't mandate anything.
I, I think, Anne, you could put that in regulation as a compliance piece. Safety, I think the legislature could also do it. I think that's a, that's, I don't know what Mark thinks, but I think that could be a joint role. So if you wanted to have more oversight around school safety and the 22 factors, I think you could do that in regulation. Now, if you do it in regulation and not in legislation, or either one, one of the challenges is going to be, they're going to have to think about how to staff that. So if you just think about fire safety and where we've come over the last 120 years in fire safety, most of that's occurred not because of the way we drill, it's because of the way we build. What, so in this case, you can, you can build and do a lot of stuff, but human error plays a huge role in like active shooter, which is what we think of most. But I think you could take any act on regulation that you wanted to secure a more robust, safe environment, however you thought about that, including, not limited to whether or not, you know, we worked with local officials to audit and you'd have to think through that. But, but I think you could do that if you wanted.
Yeah, there's just, then you get down to an unfunded mandate, which you don't want to do either. But apparent, apparently, the only requirements are, if you want a piece of that 5 million, you have to have a plan. Outside of that, you don't have to have any plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Fair?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Janet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you so much for this presentation. This was amazing. The first question I have to ask you is, can we have a copy? We want a copy. I would like to have a copy of that presentation. So thank you so much. I, it just, it breaks my heart that we have to have you even talk to us, you know? This is, it's gotten so bad because I think about the only thing I remember doing is a fire drill. But then I'm pretty old. You know, so older than you. But, and, and it, it tears me apart to see that these, this is what these kids have to go through. But I think the mental health piece is also extremely important. But I was asked a question the other day though about metal detectors. KCK has them. Do any other districts have them?
There are some other districts that do have metal detectors. I can tell you that studies out there show that there's no conclusive evidence or data out there that says that they, they are any safer than not having them.
Yeah, well, I've heard districts are doing different things this year. I mean, like Olathe, they're going to wear a kind of a necklace, I guess, too.
They have a button on the back of the badge.
But then then Chiny Mission's going to get another entrance in their elementary and middle schools, I believe, you know, double entrance.
Look, for example, like Hayesville, you know, I, I went out there and did their, their high school and 71 entrances and exits. So you have to ask yourself how, you know, that was a question. Jim, they go, how do we do this? Well, you know, basically, I tell them, you just pick two entrances that are going to be what you're going to secure. And that's what you're going to do. I mean, monitor through, you know, coming and going, you know, and stuff. Because, you know, the schools are getting bigger and like Ray said, they're building them better and safer. But the problem is now we have more exits and entrances. So how do we maintain that? So again, through camera systems and, and other ideas like that. You know, it's, 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 you know, you talk about, it, it makes me sad too, you know, because, you know, and, you know, as old as I am, and I keep telling John every day how old I am. He reminds me. No, anyway, but, you know, things have changed. But the interesting thing is that, that kids, when I'm out there, I'll do SEP Teds when school's going on. I just like to see the flow and how, you know, going on and stuff. Interesting thing is, kids are more adaptable than the adults. The kids have adapted to this change. They don't mind. If you tell them they have to go through a metal detector, they'll do that. But it's the adults that are, are fighting it. And, you know, and they said, well, this is why we used to do it. Well, things have changed, but now we're going to adapt to it and we're going to make it easier, you know, for, and, and better for, and keep them safer. So that's the less things they have to worry about. You know, and, you know, I have two kids now, they're in college now, but they still worry about that in college, you know, and what to do. You know, and so, but the thing is, we're getting better, but we have to work together, like we've talked about as, as a community, as a whole, to address that situation. And again, it's, it's just us getting out there, making that, making that conversation happen, you know, and realizing, and sometimes going through a tabletop has really been, and John and I have seen this firsthand, is a really good start. A tabletop, actually, basically is we give them a scenario of an active shooter or whatever that may be. And then we say, now work through it. And a lot of them stumble and fall. And others do real well with it because they have that plan. But the idea of the ones that stumble, fall, we want them to help, realize this is how we're going to make your plan better, you know, and walk them through it. So, you know, so we take it very serious when we do that. And I just wanted to throw that out there because it's, it is, it's tough for schools when they have, the schools are getting bigger and how do we secure it? You know, and, but it also comes through policies and procedures. That's the big thing, and John alluded to is, is training. You know, how much training? I really think situ awareness is the key. You know, if you see somebody walking around without a badge, you need to address that. If you don't feel comfortable, call, call the front office and get somebody out there to address it. You know, our teachers are the boots on the grounds. They're important, so important, keeping our kiddos safe. You know, we need to give them those tools, that option to be able to do that. So that's why, you know, that's why, anyway, you, you know, talk about regulation, anytime I, we had 157 schools apply for this grant. I saw 157 different, different crisis management plans. Some elaborate and some down to three pages. And there's, and you know where I saw the most, the most, the, the best plans were from the smaller schools? Just amazing. You know, and that's not, that's not, you know, describe, you know, I don't want to talk bad about the bigger schools, but it's just, it was like John said, they kind of picked them off the FEMA page or a page, a template that we gave them and didn't even look at, but filled in the blanks. And we need to sit down and have that serious discussion. And maybe that's one way what to look for. And what, what do we put in those plans, you know, that will make it beneficial to them? Because we are a very reactive society. We need to be proactive, you know, before something happens. So, thank you.
I just wanted to also say that a concern I, another concern I have that I just heard, I never thought of it frankly, and I heard it somewhere, is that they tell me that now kids are bringing guns to school and they are leaving them outside doors that are locked, but they open from the inside, you know, so the kid can go. I haven't heard that about, that kind of blew my mind. I thought, oh my goodness, how do we protect something like that?
Well, there was a report that I shared with John today. I got it today and it's one in four schools in the United States do not lock their door, cannot lock their doors from inside. They don't have that capability. One in four schools after Uvalde. So you, they, they have now, they don't have that capacity to lock their door, their own doors from the inside. So we need to look at that and say, you know, you know, a simple thing that we, John, I talked to about addressing was little magnets on the doors they can just pull off. But again, that takes, you know, that takes training, that takes, that takes money. But you only talk about a dollar, dollar magnet card that they can do is pull and go and lock the door, stay inside. But again, one in four, think about that. That report just came out today.
How many doors? Every one of our schools have lots of doors.
I know. So how would you like to be at a school like that? 71 doors, you know? And, you know, that's just entrances and exits. And that's, those are about the classrooms.
I think that what you said of a student, being able to talk to an adult is so important.
Yeah.
You know, feeling comfortable doing that. So anyway, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Couple of things, sometimes there's a conflict between safety and what the fire marshal regulations are.
Yeah.
I don't want to go into that right now. But my next question before we have some other questions is, what time is meet the teacher?
Four to six.
Okay.
You know what? If, if we're here till six o'clock, I'll give my kid the pass.
You have two minutes each, Ben and Jim.
This is from a distinguished colleague from Garden City, and I do not need to be recognized after she's done.
I just had a question about the communications aspect of safety. And I was wondering if you could just address the importance of broadband? Because I drive in a lot of areas, not, not just rural areas, but some that are very close to urban areas where it just goes out and there, there is no communication. So you could talk about that.
Absolutely. It's that communication or technology is great when it works, right? And that's something that we, again, we have to take from Uvalde is say, they had a system in place where they were to grab their cell phones and press a button. And it worked, but at the time that this, this incident happened, this tragedy happened, they didn't have the internet capability to make sure that everybody got that notice, right? So again, technology's great, but we shouldn't just rely upon that. When we talk about technology and communication, we talk about, there are teachers that go out and leave their building to take their classroom out to the playground. And they don't have a walkie-talkie. So if something happens inside the building, they're, they're waiting for their cell phone to ring or hopefully they hear an announcement. Or if something's going on outside and they see somebody walking by or driving by, they need to have very quick communication with that school office. When I was in SRO, I walked into a school and my radio didn't work. It was a paperweight. When I walked to the basement of any of my schools, my cell phone didn't work. And so it's about having the funds to put in the repeaters and the systems necessary so that law enforcement can communicate with each other, so that teachers can communicate with each other. And again, Jim can speak to it as well, but we saw an overwhelming number of applicants this year asking for intercom systems, for radios, for communication. And that was not able to be provided due to the legislature limiting and not allowing communications.
If, if you want to, that conversation with those superintendents was pretty sad. They said, you've got to be kidding me. How do we communicate with our teachers outside or within the school? And they go, can you put that back in there next year? And John and I just both said, we'll do our best. That always, I think that needs to be in there every year. Because, you know, when I was in emergency management at FEMA school, one thing they told us, the three Cs. If you can't communicate, you can't command. If you can't command, you can't control. You know, so important. And so that's, again, that was one that, yeah, I, I, we saw a number of those. We had to send them back and said, you need to redo this and resend it back in. But communication isn't one of them. So, yeah. And that included the radios we saw in PA systems. So, yeah. Any other questions?
Jim?
Absolutely.
You're scaring the hell out of people. I mean, and the biggest part, isn't that what you have, that anything you've said is not true? The only thing that, that the most important thing that I want to rectify, our school districts have plans. We have good, qualified people out there. You guys have said probably 27, 30 times, I was counting, how many times our schools are failing. Now, you might not hear that. That's what I heard. Okay? And I'm a little ticked off, because I'm, I know the administrators out there, and the teachers out there, and the school boards that are out there, and the district that I serve, I can't speak for other ones, that wrestle with this problem every day, and are concerned, have the same concerns you have. But you're making them sound like they don't care. And you might not know that, but that's what I'm hearing. And I used to say to people that worked for me and I worked for, it's not what you think you're saying, it's what I hear you're saying. You know, so your message for those people who are critical of us as public schools is one that we're not ready for this. We've got all this list of woes. And I'm going to tell you right now, our people are so adaptive and so good, they're going to overcome that list of woes. And they can get better if we can provide them more dollars and more resources that are tailored to them. But let's start with they're doing a good job. They're protecting our kids. They're not leaving them vulnerable. Okay? We might be leaving them vulnerable by not giving them the funds or the support. But let's give them the support, and let's recognize their efforts, and celebrate the fact that we have people who are concerned about the safety of every student and every person in their buildings. You know, and that's why I guess I'm a little ticked off when I hear a conversation like this, and it's a pile on, you know, that we're not doing our job, you know? Heck, yes, they're doing their job and more. And they're doing it because they love their kids, and they love their profession, and they want to make sure that those, those students are there. Superintendents, principals, teachers, custodians, cafeteria folks, bus drivers, they're all part of the solution, and they're all part, and they're all going to keep doing it. Now, you might not have intended, I certainly don't believe you intended, to give me that feeling that we're totally vulnerable. But that's, that's what I'm hearing. You know, um, yeah, I, I'm just, I want to stand up for the people who are in the field that are protecting our kids every day and doing a darn good job. And they are concerned about the vulnerabilities and know them better than we do. You know, so let's give them some recognition and some support, you know, in a terrible situation, because you can't plan for a crazy person. You know? So, thank you out there to all of the people who work in our USD 259s and the, and the first responders, and all the things that they're already doing, that we need to help them get better, not distract them in terms of that they're not doing a good job. Thank you.
One thing that concerns me is that some of us have been beaten up for the last month because of our support for social emotional learning. If, if I remember correctly, virtually every time somebody has been an active shooter, there has, they have been bullied, they have been isolated. So I think that there's a huge opportunity for us. What, what we need to, to help schools do is to have programs that identify the isolated, identify those that are bullied, and, and, and help them. Because I think that that might very well be prevention. And I didn't, I didn't hear the same thing Jim did. I heard, you know, a critical need. And, and I agree that people are doing their best job. I know I was frustrated when I ever had to do other reports and things like that, because there's so much other stuff that just piled on. But, you know, I appreciate what you're, what you're doing. I know the resources are not there to do what we need to do. But let's, let's just do the best we can, and let's advocate for better.
Right, right. Yeah, that's not what, you know, we intended to do. The idea was, we want them, God love them, to do the best they can with what they have. You know, and, and that's why we're here to help them where we can, you know? I told John, I said, if I, if I was a billionaire, I'd love to give them each a million. Of course, my math is bad, so I probably run out of money real quick, so, so, but, you know, but that's the idea. Our heart's in the right place. We want to make sure that they, they keep the kiddo safe, you know, walking through those. So it's, that's what we're, our intention is. So again, I, I do apologize if that's what went through, and, and again, we'll do, we're going to do everything we can with what powers we have to make them better. That's why I take these set dead serious. And, and, you know, when they have, like I said, we have 157. I was just glad they all had, had a plan.
Yeah.
You know, to start with. And that's a great start.
I know your heart's in the right place. I know it is.
Well, we thank you for your presentation, and by the way, go meet the teacher.
Sorry, I think I locked my knees. I started getting real lightheaded, so I didn't, I didn't want to avoid anything, but.
Wait.
Sit down before you had to pick me up.
We kind of affect people negatively. We're really an intimidating group. At any rate, let's take a 10-minute break. The consent agenda, A, B, E, and F. Somebody raise your hand. Dina and Ben, discussion on A, B, E, and F. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, motion carries. D and E, did you want to comment, Michelle?
It's C and D.
That's what I meant. You didn't, you listened to what I mean, not what I say.
I got, I got information, more information from Dr. Watson. I just, I'm, all, what I'll end up doing is just sustaining because I need more information. So I'll just sustain.
Okay, motion to approve C and D on the consent agenda. Betty and Jim. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, abstain. 9-0-1, thank you. Chair's report. Do we have any information about the graduation test force?
No, but we'll be reporting again soon.
Okay, thank you. Policy committee. Oh, yeah, yeah, some, I'm so excited about graduation test force. I just, we'll get to it. I'll, I'll just readjust it. Let's go ahead and finish. Policy committee.
Okay, I did want to mention that the policy committee met today, and we completed our review of the, the policy handbook and guidelines. And those are going to be, um, updated, and will come before you at the next meeting for your review.
Thank you. Student Voice and Kansas Advisory Committee on Indigenous Educational Working Group, Anne.
Well, the Student Voice Committee continues to go visit students and put some things together. But I think there are a few things that have come out of what we've heard already that we might want to discuss some time in policy before the end of the year. So maybe September, October. I think most of the conferences will be done by then. We can put together a list and talk about what we ought to take action on. KC, uh, working group meets August 19th. We're going to be starting to dig into curriculum and standards. We're going to take a look at the mascot recommendation and data collection.
Thank you. Now, we'll go back to travel. I have a, a Pleasanton groundbreaking, not groundbreaking, ribbon cutting event this Friday in Pleasanton. It would be mileage only. And the Governor's Council on September the 9th. I'll need a per diem because I'll go up to that before. That's for me. Anybody? Ben?
I did email it to, to her, so you have it in writing. But I have an Ag in the Classroom Board Meeting on August 11th, which is Thursday. Just salary, and then a salary on September 1st for an Ag in the Classroom Education Meeting.
Anne?
Thank you. I just had a last minute visit to Ottawa last night to represent us at the Catbackers event. They said hi, Jim, and just mileage on that. Thank you.
Where was that?
Uh, the Fairgrounds in, in Ottawa.
Anything else? Melanie?
Um, September 7th, Acacia Leadership Meeting, there's students here. It's only mileage for that.
Anything else? Jean?
I just wanted to mention that, uh, in regards to the efforts to try to deal with the recruiting and retention of teachers, there was a recruiting and retention summit on July 28th at K-State. And they've divided the, the group, uh, volunteers who are working on that into apprenticeships, educator development, communication, local leadership, and testing. And they'll be, um, coming out with a more detailed report soon. And regarding the next steps of what recommendations they might have in that area. So they are working on that.
Anything else? Motion to be in order to approve travel. Jim and Melanie, discussion, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Now, I talked about two things this morning, and if you look at this handout that's in your packet. HB 2567. I'm going to point out some things, and this may just be me. And so, you know, if nobody else is interested, uh, then we'll just pass it up. But then I'm going to open it up to anybody. We will not make any decisions today. I've asked Mark to, if we want to look at something and maybe make some alternatives or say no, we need to know what our options are. So I've asked him to, to review that and report to us in executive session next, at our next board meeting. However, if we don't tell him what we are concerned about, then he doesn't know what to report. So, go ahead, Anne.
Chip, is 2567 the only bill that had, that impacted us?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Okay.
This is, this is what I'm going to ask for. Section 3, uh, I would like, uh, at, I, I would just, section 3, Virtual Math Education Programs, it's on the first page. Uh, I would like to ask what our options are and what our responsibilities are, and if any organization actually qualifies. What concerns me with section 6, the every child read, all, all students move toward grade level precision literacy in third grade. And it looks to me, this is a quick reading, that the only thing that they're using as a measurement is the third grade assessment. And I would like, if, consistent with what else that we're talking about, if we are going to look at this, I would like for us to look at things other than the third grade assessment, the regular assessment. Section 7, the last thing. Grade 6 through 12 earn course credits through alternative education programs. It is my belief that this is already available, that this is, this places additional restrictions on school districts that they currently don't have, and it's an area where you like local control until you don't. And right now, school districts can do this without the, without the additional requirements. I think we need to visit about that.
What was that section?
It's section 7. It's the last block on the first page. Now, these are just my thoughts. You know, you can tell me I'm at the lunch. The thing's on who goes to school. Well, I don't think we have any control over that. So I'm moving on to page 3. Section 11. Well, we, we're, basically you're supposed to report child abuse. I have no problem with that. But in other sections, I, I find it interesting that we're supposed to, supposed to encourage Acacia to participate, to, to report, uh, abuse and neglect, which we're all, all school personnel are mandatory reporters. And we find things later on in this document that prevents us from asking the questions to identify abuse and neglect. I'll get to that in a minute. Section 14 allows part-time enrollment. I think they can do that anyway. So that may be redundant. And then I'm skipping to page 5, section 27, questionnaires, survey, examination. This is what I'm talking about. How can, you know, it prevents us from asking, in my view, asking the questions. Does it, I'll be blunt. I know that shocks everyone. There are kids that come to school from intact families that are safe and secure. There are kids that come to school and the only place they're safe is at school. If we have to ask for permission, if they want to talk to a teacher about what happened, if they've been abused or neglected, if they have to talk to it, if they, if they want to talk to somebody, it appears to me that we have to have the permission of the abuser before we can talk to that kid. And I think that that at least needs to be discussed. That's the end of my part. Anything else? Anybody want to add? Ben?
On page 4, on the virtual school graduation rate, does this go against federal reporting requirements as to determining how we determine the graduation rate?
Yes.
Okay. I think that needs to be discussed.
What, what that means is, we would still have to report the federal reporting on graduation in addition to doing this, because you can't not do the federal reporting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anne?
I was thinking there was something in the virtual school stuff they put together that conflicted, that told us what we had to lock the graduation. Is that the same thing?
It's, it's how you count virtual graduation rate. It goes back to the school district. If, if the student is behind in credits, it goes to the school district of where the school student transferred.
Oh, I, it had to do with KISA, what we found for KISA, for a presentation. That we were going to count their graduation rate.
Correct, which is the federal definition, which is wherever they are at the time their cohort graduates. That's, that's what's counted in the federal. If you make a bona fide transfer, the federal government then says, then you're a member of, if you leave your second semester senior year from Blue Valley and go to Shawnee Mission, you are a member of the Shawnee Mission cohort, not the Blue Valley.
But it may not only conflict with federal guidelines, but with what we do through KISA.
That is correct.
And we're going to do the KISA, what we have with the KISA.
I think that's one of the things you want to discuss, because now you're talking three different entities.
And that's a pretty significant investigation, Mark.
If you want to talk about what confuses school districts, that would be what confuses school districts.
So we could, we could have a federal requirement in, in conflict with this law?
It's in disagreement.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say, because it's in, you could report both. KISA is built upon the federal definition of graduation, which is four years from the time that you start as a freshman through, for example, right now, the class of 2022 has until October to show graduation. And then that cohort closes. So they can still be grad, even though most of us think about graduation in May, they can still graduate from that cohort after October, that window closes, and they would be considered a non-graduate. Want more?
I want everybody that wants to discuss something to have the opportunity.
On page 4, section 14. Each Board of Education of a school district shall allow any child to enroll part-time in a school district to allow the student to attend any course programs or services offered by the school. If the style, blah, 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 you know, um, you go down and, and, uh, the district shall make a good faith effort to attempt to accommodate scheduling requests of students enrolling at the district. This is kind of a triple-edged sword. Districts already have policies about this, you know, for one. Two, cross-enrollment can sometimes be a problem, because if you're in a secondary school, you can't get chemistry when you want it, you know, or, or, or class. And it really only affects certain schools and districts, a small number. I'll take Wichita or even Garden City, you know, but I, I, I can't speak for others. But in Wichita, Betty, you can confirm this if I'm wrong, because I'm basing it on prior experience. If we could help a student in another school, we did it. You know, we, we didn't just cut kids off, you know? But a lot of times, they had to adjust their schedules to meet our schedule. Whether it was a course, whether it was, whatever it was. But it also has other programs here that you can have access to. And I don't know where the Activities Association would fall into this, you know? There's other agencies and other opportunities that students have that could fall into conflicts. You know, that they're, that, and their openness here says. But I guess if you wanted to take it for the school district, the school district could make it more restrictive or more open, you know? But there's only so many school districts in the state that can actually even participate in this.
I do know that from a real point of perspective, which of course, the only thing I know is that we had students that wanted to play in the band that were homeschooled. So we let them.
We let them, yeah.
Or they wanted to take physics, so we let them, you know? There was never an issue of too much. Now, in many of those cases, we, we only have two or three a year, you know? We're not talking about a large number. But it was certainly not unusual for that student to make connections and then become a full-time student. It actually was a.
But I read into this also, that a student, and I'll just use, because it's, it, it happens to be my backyard. I'm the principal at Northwest, and a student wants to go from Northwest, but wants to play football at Bishop Carroll. You could pretty much do that under this, but that's a Acacia thing as well, you know? But this opens. But this opens that door, you know, or I'm only two miles from Mays, I'm a half a mile from Bishop Carroll, I'm at Northwest, and Goddard's like two miles away. I don't want this to become a cafeteria service. You know, consistency of enrollment is important, you know, for financial reasons, but also for the, the good, that well-being of the school and the, and the student. It opens up a lot of doors that I don't think they realize, or if they do realize, they're just letting it happen.
Okay. You got the feeling on that, Mark? Anything, anything else?
Homeschool is also, I think, considered a private elementary or secondary school. So it includes homeschools.
Well, those of us that don't have a lot, you know, that don't have a lot of private schools, it was always homeschools, in my experience. Okay, so this is what I would like to happen next month. I would like for our liaisons to at least have a draft of our priorities, and then we need to look at this and see if there, if there are things, you know, we may decide, okay, this is the way it is, and that's the way it is, or we may want to see what our options are if we consider some of these, like for instance, the one on, on alternative courses. I see that as a, as something that, that they can do anyway, that we encourage, and this actually puts more restrictions than less restrictions, and I would prefer, I think, to me, that's the one that's the most obvious overreach.
I was going to comment on that, too, that in some instances, it's possible if there's more policy that conflicts with our policy, that it's a problem that as well.
Yes. I don't think, I don't.
Local board policy that conflicts with our policy.
Okay, the question, statement was, there's sometimes local board policy that conflicts with ours, and we need to be aware of and appreciative of that. Anything else? Okay, I've asked those of us who participated in the last election cycle to talk about some of the misconceptions, basically misunderstandings, misrepresentations, whatever word you want to use. And one of them, the other thing that I mentioned whenever I brought this up, is probably the one that is the least obnoxious, but I'm, then I'm going to open it up to my colleagues if they want to participate otherwise, I'll say some things. It was, every time that, that we had a forum, it was said that, you know, we do not, that we are still favoring college whenever, in fact, we have been very adamant, and I've, the commissioner, I've heard him say this many times for the eight years I've been on, or the seven and a half years I've been on this board, we need to celebrate the valedictorian, but we also need to celebrate that person that has gotten the full ride to Wichita Tech to be a welder. We need to, we need to honor each child, and so that message was completely missed. This, the, the belief, and the people in the audience believed that, yeah, that's a great idea, let's, let's support those people that want to, that want to go some career path other than, than college, as if that's the only thing we were supporting. And so I think that that's important. That's a message that we, and I've asked Denise to be here to help us, not necessarily this, you don't necessarily have to have a plan this afternoon, you know, but, but we need to do a better job of, we were talking about messaging all day long, that's one of them. Do any of you guys want to chime in there? Go ahead, Anne.
Well, just a thought, I don't know, like, we paid, what, a million dollars to promote higher paths, which is exactly what you're talking about promoting other occupations, et cetera. Denise, when they do that, like on Facebook and stuff, does it say paid for by the State Board of Education? So maybe we're not taking credit for all the things that we're doing that we're paying for, just one of them.
I know one thing that I got a lot of, and I was miscommunicated, is that social emotional learning is the same thing as critical race theory. And then when pressed as to what critical race theory is, it's the inclusion of LGBT individuals in the classroom, which we, I don't know how CRT and inclusion in that regard match up, but that was a narrative that was spread very heavily, not only in postcards, but also with, with our work with NASB. As you know, NASB doesn't do lobbying, doesn't do that sort of work. They track what happens in DC, but they don't act, we don't, NASB does not employ a lobbyist in terms of advocating for legislation. They just set up meetings between us and our representatives, and that's, that's the extent that they go. But using our work with NASB and comparing it to NASB, National Association of School Boards, they are not the same organization. And that also got out there. I know we got emails about that last September, about how when you leave, we don't donate to NASB, that's not us. We do NASB, completely different environment, completely different purpose. It's for interstate communication, and for those of us that have shared problems, like Nebraska and us have a lot of things in common. I talked to Maureen and Robin up in Nebraska, and some of our colleagues, and Lisa Frecky up in Nebraska, and, and next door to Missouri, we have a lot of things in common that we can, we can work together on, or say, we have similar challenges, how are you approaching this in your system? So it's a good collegial organization to work on, and it's not an advocacy organization in terms of working with the feds or any of those departments. So I know that that was a lot of things to, that, that came up within my area of the state.
And there's a complete misunderstanding about what social emotional issues is. It's not indoctrinating students. It's developing the capacity to help them overcome the traumas that they've had, so that they can be taught to read, write, and do math. Anybody else have anything else?
May I chime in?
You certainly may.
First time I get a chance to talk about messaging. My concern really isn't focused on those individuals that spread it as much as it is those individuals that receive and believe that information. And that's where the significance is. That's where I am more concerned, because if you, if you are convinced that, Michelle mentioned this, that you have a great relationship with the school, and your kids are, are receiving a good education, then it doesn't matter how many people come to you to tell you otherwise, because you know better. That's my concern, and that's been my focus, is that we probably should look at ways of telling our story, better ways of telling our story, more effective ways of, and, and not be so modest. It's so many times that I even see, as an example, teachers that do really, really great things, but they don't go around talking about it, they just kind of accept that as, that's what we do. And that's all well and good, but if you look at the fact that maybe many community members don't know you as a teacher, I'm just using that as an example, feel that way, then they could be easily swayed. So I really, even in, when I bring up future items, I'm just not sure whose bailiwick that would be, other than maybe we get the commissioner up there and, and, and just kind of have ideas back and forth. But I would love to see us look at ways that people grasp the magnitude of education, the role that it serves, and what educators are doing, not what they're not doing, but the things that they are, and to stand up and, and take that vow. And I, I really think that's important, and I also would love to see more discussion on ways and ideas that we can do, do a better job of that.
Well, perception is reality, and so if you believe that schools are failing, that's your perception, that's, that's the reason I brought this up, not to whine about it, but to say, perhaps we need to present the message differently than we are, you know. The message that was received was that social emotional learning is evil, and it's, and that was the message that was received and believed by a lot of people in the forums that I went to, that NAS, the, the school, our, NASB was the same thing as, and that we were supporting, calling, you know, I was accused of calling teachers or parents terrorists. Of course, that's completely, and that, you know, as we all were, that, that we are supporting and encouraging critical race theory. Those are not accurate statements, but they are believed in such a way that are factual, but is also positive and gets our message out. We do not, you know, we, we do not do a real good job of communicating our successes. Jean, Jean and then Janet.
I just wanted to add data collection to those areas and issues that are mis. Data collection to those areas and issues that are misunderstood, because I think that if we can get the correct information out to people, there will be a much greater understanding of the, what we collect, why we collect it, that these things are federally or state mandated, and that, that it is just part of, of what is necessary in order for us to, to meet those mandates. I think there, in general, there is a real fear in the public of big government and over intrusion into individuals' lives, and that certainly isn't the attention or the effect of this data collection. This is just an effort to, to continue to run schools and to provide the academic and other areas of schools that we need to do to keep them running. So I, I think data collection, the systems that we use for that, and the rationale would be, would be a topic that might be even addressed in, at another board meeting separately.
Janet?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just, I'd like to say that I think maybe what we need to do is, is communication, there's no doubt. It's, but I kept going back to critical race theory. You know, we made a statement on that. We made it a long time ago, but maybe people have forgotten that, you know, and so maybe we need to repeat it or do something to make sure that's out there every one, every once in a while, because we said it already, I mean, I don't know what more we can do, because we don't, you know, it's not here in Kansas. But anyway, I was thinking also, another one that I've heard so much about was banning books, you know. Almost every, every district I'm aware of, now, maybe I don't know all the districts, but every district I'm aware of has a library committee that consists of community members, parents, and all kinds of people that select the library books, you know, and all of a sudden, they're wanting to remove library books, you know, ban them, and if they don't want their child to read them, they have the right to say, don't let my child have this, check out this book, you know, and they, they can do that, because if we have, I just think we need to relay this, that these things are being done, like, people probably don't know that there are committees in our schools that make these selections that are well represented by the entire community, and I think these are on any of these issues that we hear. We need to bring them up, and we need to make sure that we have a press release or something that goes out, and then maybe do it on a regular basis.
Anything else? Melanie and then Michelle.
Just make a quick comment. Many of the topics that have been touched on already, we're using abbreviations and acronyms in place of real words. And even when we use real words like social emotional learning, we may all be used to that. Teachers, we know, are very used to it, but the general public and parents can't relate to those words. So I would encourage us to think about changing what, you know, the, the way that we are having that conversation. So yes, back to communication, but I would just encourage using a different set of words and call it what it really is, break it down into smaller pieces if we need to, just to make it easier to digest, even in the media, when you're talking to families. It's out there.
Michelle?
Thank you. Yeah, I've noticed a lot of, even our school district, when I signed up my son at the end of July, he, we can opt out of social emotional. They've made it specifically, so each parent can opt out of that, which, because if you have children in the school, and you're paying attention to what's going on in the school and what surveys they're taking, when they are being surveyed, or when they are doing some of these social emotional surveys, if you're looking at the verbiage and what's being asked of them, and, for example, the Communities, Communities at Care Survey, I used to be able to opt my child out of that, I didn't even see it on, on there, but I don't know if they included that in social emotional, maybe they did, I don't know. It's all lumped under one thing. So that, that, that's a specific survey that's taken sixth through 12th grade, maybe, maybe some of those questions would be more appropriate, maybe for my child older, so that's why I appreciate, and I'm trying to get the word out, the parents have to be involved in their child's education, and the books, the book thing, there's people, have been some people on the committee, and some people were aware that could be on committees, sometimes they didn't even know the policy, but a book that comes up cannot, in my district, can't be reviewed again for another two years. So, so, and then, and then they were talking about the stuff that was in it, it conflicts with their own policy. So that, I said at those board meetings, and I was just like, oh, you know, that makes sense, it's conflicting against their own policy. So I think the trust, and when we had the person here this morning from Leitha, if you have a thousand people showing up, you're trying to implement something in a school, a thousand people show up, you have that constitutional authority to respond to the people that are showing up in droves, like, if there's a thousand people, you might want to have maybe multiple meetings and discuss it, rather than just say, oh, we're having a hearing in, in a month and 30 days, and this is what we're going to implement. People need time to digest it, communicate, communication's key, like we talked about time and time again, it's like, well, we, we have substitutes, or they, they don't even have emails, I mean, things like that, it's like, we have to have, we can't just pass things and then be like, oh, this is what's going on, and we have 30 days in professional development, and this has to happen, start of the school year, kind of like with the virtual math. I mean, it's like, okay, we passed it in April, we have to, we have to send it out for an RFP, we have to figure out how much it is, what, what the virtual math is. I mean, there's so many things that are like, the communication is, is poor. I will admit, as a parent, I'm like, what, what are we talking, I'm, I'm still getting CRT questions. I said, it's not in our standards, they're not supposed to be teaching that. If you can give me specific examples, you need to be taking that to your teacher, then the administrator of that school building. I, I don't know how many emails of that I've sent out, because it, if you're finding something that you don't agree with, you need to address it with that teacher in, within that school building, because it may not be happening everywhere, but it may be happening in that building. And if, if it's happening with your child, you need to be involved in, in, in their education, and that's when you say, I'm sorry, but my kid's going to say, sit down in the library when that's going on in the school. I have that right to pull my child out, send him to the library when that, when that's going on in the school, whether it be suicide awareness, I may take him for ice cream that day. They're not going to be involved in that. They're not. If it's somebody coming in from the outside and discussing that, it's, sometimes if they're young enough, it's putting things in their mind that they never ever would think of doing, especially with those surveys I'm seeing, when was the first time you did this? Are my peers doing that? Should I have been, it's, it's the way things are worded, so you have to be very involved in your child's education, very involved in those surveys, ask them every day, like, what's going on, what'd you learn today, and, and, and talk to their kids, because my kids will tell me everything. I'm, I'm fortunate, my kids will tell me everything. They're very open and honest, and I think that that's where we need to get to, is communication, it needs to be an individual thing with parents. I'm not telling the teachers what they need to teach, because I'm aware of what they teach, they give me that. I'm very happy with most of the teachers, I mean, because I have that open communication, I can see what my children are learning, but others may not, may not have that, may not have that relationship with their school, with their teacher. So I'm saying, here's what you need to be aware of, this is coming down, or this is out there. I, my kid's taken that survey in the past, or they won't be taking it anymore, for, for whatever reason, for my family, and I want parents to be aware of that. So I'm, I'm for open communication, I'm for parent, at least, being involved in their education, opting out when they feel that it's very strongly against their beliefs. That's a lot, but that's where I.
Yeah, one other thing, Mark, we got this survey, this, I mean, this petition this morning. My personal prejudice is that schools should have an opportunity, just like we do, for parents to, for anybody to. parents to, for anybody to, to come like they do to us, you know? There needs to be parameters, you can't have a thousand people comment, you know, that's just not practical, but, 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 you know, so, so I believe that every school district should have that opportunity for parent input, but I don't know what our authority is. So I think we need to respond to this survey, but I'd like for you to let us know what, what our authority is or isn't when we meet next month. Is that reasonable? Okay.
Well, Jim, I will add one more thing on the, on the move. I sent a very thoughtful, an email to our board members about how they could speak to it, and their, and their boards are out of the state or whatever, taking up that time, because some of them have the, you don't, if you don't sign up by noon on this day on a Friday, and what people will do is they'll gobble up all those time slots and then not speak. And it has to be like a, a rant, it has to be, there has to be a better system set up, because, so we need to tell them it needs to be fair, for one. Maybe we could just say, "Needs to be fair." You can't have a system. So I said, if it's somebody local that's taxpayer, I don't care, it's a grandpa, a business owner, if they have issues, they want to bring them to the board, and that, to the, to their local board. If they pay taxes and they live in that district, not outside or cross the, cross the border over in Missouri, and they're coming in with a certain group with a certain mission, it should be people that are locally represented within that district and pay taxes in that district.
And my point is, I'm not sure that we have the authority to make them do that, but we can, we do have the influence to influence them to do that, so. And that's the question that I'm asking Mark, to tell us whether or not-
Right.
-where our authority is before we make, I don't want us to make a policy that is beyond our authority.
I, I totally agree with that, because I don't want to mandate anything-
So that's what-
Just give suggestions as far as-
That's, that's what I'm asking Mark to do, to investigate what our, what our options are, and let us know next time we do this. Oh, Dina? Okay.
Thank you. As I mentioned to you early this morning, that I think we need to know what kind of data is collected, who collects it, who has access to it, and those are things we ought to know. So when someone says, "You're collecting data from my kids," and you shouldn't be, and you have access to it, we need to know what is being done. And I just think we need to hear what is happening. And so I know that Jean mentioned data collection, and I just want to take a little further and say, it needs to be detailed, what, what's being collected, whether it's a local district that's collecting it, did we authorize a program that everybody uses, and if so, then what is being colla-, what data is being collected?
Yeah, easy as that.
What data is being shared, and who has access to it? So we can answer some of the brochures and, and information that's being shared that's not correct. So we have the correct information.
Yeah. Randy said he could get that to us in Friday notes, and then we'll have further discussion if we need to. Janet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to simply, what Michelle was talking about, I agree with about parental involvement and knowledge of things, having the right to opt their child out. But I guess my problem is, not my problem, but my, I don't under, one thing I don't understand is, when I was in high school, now, you got to remember, that was long before many of you. When I was in high school, when I was a sophomore, we had to read The Scarlet Letter, and I remember one mother threw a fit. Her daughter was not going to read that, that book, because it was really bad, because that really excited all of us, you know? So anyway, but you know what? She didn't have to read it. They, the, the school respected her opinion and gave the girl another book to read, you know? And then I remember, that's the only one I really remember when I went to school, so then, we were doing it back then, you know, it was a parent just said, "No, I don't like that." They, they, they respected it. And then I remember when my son started kindergarten, back when we went half a day, every morning before, when school started, they said the Pledge of Allegiance, and they had several students in there who had to be excused from that because of their religion. I don't know what religion it was, but I mean, you know, it was obviously important. So those children were excused, so once again, we respected it. So I guess I don't see why, this is, we've always, it sounds like to me, we've always respected parents' opinions, do they, are they not aware of? Do they just think they have to do what the school tells them, or what? Because I don't understand that, because I have always, and when I was on the local board, we always respected, I, I can imagine if somebody said, "I don't want my kid to take second grade math," I mean, we might have a problem with that, but you know? But I guess I don't understand why parents feel this is a problem. I've just, it's always been so open and available at every place I've been. Now, maybe I'm living in an alternative world, but this is what happened to me.
You've had all yours. Betty.
Janet, I hate to disillusion you.
It's hard. I live in an alternative world.
Yeah, because that really is not reflective of our society. There are many parents that are not heard. There are many parents that are dismissed, for whatever reason. It could be economic, it could be racial, but please, don't harbor under the assumption that all men are treated, are treated equally, because that, that's not the case. And I don't want, I don't want anybody feeling like we are so blinded by our individual experiences that we cannot acknowledge that there are many others who have different experiences, and it is not our responsibility to sit here and just ignore a reality. It's, it's not an alternative reality. That's life. People are treated differently. And I mean, I appreciate what you're saying. I would love it if we lived in that kind of world, but I just have to tell you, we don't.
No, I understand what you're saying, but I'm telling you, my experiences with parents, personally and through my local district, has been different, and I'm not talking about racial issues, I mean, absolutely not, because I understand that 100%. No, I know exactly what that is. I was born in Houston.
Man?
Switch gears back to Dina. That was the smoothest transition I can offer. And with that, I think, being very upfront with the ramifications are of a altering our data collection system with the, and if it becomes an optional data reporting system, what that does to the, to the state in terms of budgetary and those requirements. So just piggyback off of, of Dina's request.
Well, we have a lot to discuss next meeting, and if we need to, we'll continue this discussion. You know, it depends on, Mark's going to give us what our options are. I've spent most of my career ignoring lawyers, but, but at least we need to know what our options are before we do that, and prepare that, because I think this messaging thing is critical. Getting the, getting the message out is critical, and the issues of, of how we're going to respond to what I consider some areas of 2567 that, that may not be in the best interest of the state. And if that requires coming back after lunch on next, on, on Wednesday, the next meeting, then we are going to tend to, tend to, tentatively plan to stay a little later, because if we need to do that, we're going to, because we need to get some of these things taken care of. And I want to have a good discussion with our liaisons about what our plans for the future session is, and I think this is all related. I don't want to put, turn any, stop, I don't want to stop the discussion, but I'm ready to move on, if everybody else is. Mark, attorney's report.
Some of these topics are extremely timely, because there was a federal case that an opinion was issued on Friday by one of the federal court judges. The case is captioned Jennifer, Jennifer Gilmore versus Joe Beveridge and Olathe School District and Olathe Board of Education. It relates to the open forum issue-
Mark, are you on?
The light is on. I'll, I'll-
Now I can.
Okay. This case is, and I can be happy to circulate it, but it came, it came up with, just by coincidence to, at the public forum here today. We, I reported on it in the policy committee meeting and made some recommended changes based on, to the policy related to the open forum. This opinion came down Friday. It was, it came from a incident at the Olathe Board of Education meeting in, I believe, January, and one of the speakers came in, there was some history that's not necessarily relevant to my presentation, but related to family members, prior candidates, and so there was some hostility between individuals. But the speaker came in and started accusing a few of the board members, or a board member of purchasing the seat with their contributions and, and being liars, and the speaker was escorted out and removed. And so the, the news that I see around the country is that these kinds of incidents and, and things do come up more and more often, so it's very timely that you're having this discussion. You know, the basic concept to keep in mind is that we're talking about, always have to remember what law applies to a public entity, a subdivision of the government, and so, for example, the, you know, school boards are political subdivisions of the government, you've got elected officials, and you've got public entities that, like the state board or, you know, the public meeting, that's why the Open Meetings Act, Open Records Act applied to these, to these meetings, and so whenever a board creates a forum, the question is, is it a completely open forum, a free-for-all? Is it a closed forum where you, you don't have the opportunity to come in and present, and it's a private meeting, which isn't, which has very specific parameters for executive session or closed session, and you have to meet those exceptions, because the general rule is that as a, as a public body, you have to conduct your, your business in open. And so of the four types of forums created by the public body, it's defined as a limited public forum, meaning you do provide for a open discussion and you provide for the, for the presentation of public ideas. In the forum that you create, which is the segment of the board meeting, which is an open, a limited public forum. I haven't had a chance to read the report that was presented today, but I would give you my, my personal opinion is that most of the changes that occur, or the closing of public forums and removal of that from the agenda, is probably just based on my experience working with a number of public entities, is that it becomes, it, you know, the tail wags the dog, in the sense that you get, you have, you know, dozens or hundreds of people coming to speak, and you can't get any business done, done, so they end up overreacting and closing the public forum, because they want to get business done, and the tail then, you know, the, the limited public forum that's created ends up just overshadowing everything that, that occurs during the meeting. And so I do note that it's interesting that, you know, this all rose out of, in Olathe, and Olathe moved their public meeting portion, or excuse me, their public forum portion to a different point in time, and then the author of this report says that on August 4th, the board voted to return public comments to their regular meetings and resume, resume the live stream of the meeting in its entirety. So probably had a cooling off period, given that this lawsuit was pending, they were requesting a permanent injunction against the school board in the school district. And so now they've returned that as of Thursday last week, and then this report came out. The part that's most, that I found instructive in terms of what your procedure is and what my recommendations are, just to briefly recap, the, when you, so the law that, that applies is the First Amendment, and if you have an open public forum that provides, you know, limited, meaning that you can control, you can keep it reasonable, you can set some time, place, and manner restrictions, you can have them fill out forms to identify themselves, but you cannot have content-specific limitations. So I, I realize you, you have a certain important, important opinion that they have to be taxpayers or they have to be, you know, that you can't make rules that are, that prejudge the speaker, the restrictions have to be content-neutral, because you've created the public forum for people to come in. But the part that's really relevant to the discussion is, well, does, does that allow for a free-for-all? And in this case, the Kansas federal court judge ruled that the policy language that relate, that specifically said that the speaker must speak on a topic which is, quote, germane to the business or activities of the board. And there was a, the, the federal judge said that that was, that was not a vague limitation, that was a reasonable restriction for speakers. We have something at the very beginning of the public forum, which is very similar to that, but I've, I've, I've recommended to the policy committee chair that we tighten that down a little bit and use the word germane to the business and activities of the board, so that it's clear that you can't just come and talk about presidential politics unless there is something that is not necessarily on the agenda, but is within the, you know, which, which is relevant, which is germane to the business of the board. That still might leave some subject to interpretation, but it's, it's closer to helping define what the topics would be. So in Olathe, they have that limitation. They also require comment cards to just identify the name, the topic that you intend to speak on. They allow five minutes, and that was a reasonable, you know, and, and I've, I've seen in the, in the past, being in this position long enough, that when we had 50 or 60 speakers, the topics were not, you know, the identification of the topics were not used to screen and say, "You can talk, you can't." It's not a, it's not a screening mechanism to, you know, to stifle conversation, but previous board chairs have maybe grouped the topics together so that they were all at one time, or, you know, asked speakers to limit their talks if it was redundant, those kinds of things. So there's, it's a, it's a time, place, and manner restriction, it's, you can impose reasonable restrictions. And so I, I think we have, I've compared some of the rulings of, of this court to our existing board policy and our procedure. I've made a couple very limited recommendations, but it was very helpful to read this, I'll be happy to circulate it around, and the court basically said that, you know, reminded the parties that it's, you know, it, it needs to be germane to the business or activities of the board. The board chair does have the authority to prevent or to limit, you know, limit discussion, or in our case, we talk about personal attacks, personnel matters, in this case, the, the language talked about, you can't, you know, attack specific personnel or students. It's- or students. It's perfectly acceptable to set your rules that the speaker should not be rude, potentially defamatory, or inherently disruptive. My advice, whether or not I agree with a particular speaker or not, I always, my long-term advice to boards is typically, if you're going to have an open forum, as long as it's not, doesn't incite some, you know, riot, or is not rude or profane, your job as a public official, as an elected official, is to grin and bear it. And you don't, you know, it's not the time to engage and debate that issue. But if you've ever been caught in litigation that takes months, and you each have to give your deposition, if you weigh, if you weigh the three minutes of listening politely to, you know, views of someone that you maybe don't agree with, against the, you know, getting tied up in court for, and spending a lot of money to litigate that issue, that's usually a pretty good way to gauge when my clients, you know, want to, you're instinctively perhaps maybe want to shut, shut the discussion down. And I say, I think it's, it's really your job to grin and bear it, and if you have reasonable procedures in place. And that includes limiting the discussion to subjects or topics that are germane to the business and activities of the board, you'll be okay.
So our statement about no personal attacks will be tolerated is reason, in your view, reasonable?
It is.
And your advice would be that regardless of whether we agree or disagree, we just listen and move on to the next person, as opposed to engaging in questions?
Provided that, yes, I would, I think that it's, it's good precatory reminder to read and explain, not only to the speaker, but a reminder to the board members that this is not the opportunity to engage and open up a debate. Certainly, follow-up, questions for clarification, you know, in a controlled way is perfectly appropriate. But, and you can set rules that, that limit, you know, and prevent things from escalating on, in a way that, you know, is really getting into things that are profane, or, you know, or, but it's, it can't be, can't be, it has to be content-neutral, but, you know, disruptive, things that are disruptive can be limited, and you have the ability to cut them off and escort them out if it escalates to the point where it's disruptive to the meeting.
So who's going to be the bouncer? Okay, thank you. Future agenda items. Melanie?
Apparently I'm already on. Um, I lost my note. I wanted to ask for a board retreat on KISA and accreditation after some of the conversation that we had today. I think it would be good to devote some more time to that.
Okay, thank you. Try to schedule that sooner.
Try to schedule that sooner rather than later. And?
Thank you. I thought what Dr. Schrock had to say today was interesting, and we ought to explore it more. I mean, we know the number one factor in student success is teacher preparation. And yet, evidently, back when No Child Left Behind came in, the state board at that time lowered the requirement to actually have certified teachers in the classroom, or you lose your accreditation. I think we ought to look at that. Can't hear me? I think we ought to look at what are the requirements for having qualified teachers in the classroom that were asking under KISA, and see if that needs to be strengthened.
And maybe what are the consequences of not having one?
Evidently, there aren't any right now.
Okay, well, we need to confirm that and see.
Yeah.
By the way, Dr. Schrock is the one that's complained to me about the three minutes.
Uh-huh.
And I've told him, "We'll be glad to reconsider that and move it to two."
Well, it is, it is pretty short if you're ever trying to make a point. But I thought that, and then you've probably all seen the thing about inflated grades. And I think that's something we ought to maybe take a look at, too. I think there's a real valid point to schools inflating grades. When we see schools passing the graduating class with three, 3.5 GPAs, but they can't score on the ACT, something's not right. So, thank you.
Okay, Betty.
Thank you. One of the things that we've discussed today really is advocating for your students. And there are, there are some people that do that really, really well, and then there are some people that don't really know how to advocate. And I'm just kind of wondering if we could perhaps have something about parent involvement in their students' education, the family, the parent engagement. I'd love to know what kinds of things they're doing, even on a, we're doing on a district level, to empower parents to advocate for their students, or how to advocate. I have encountered a few that say, "I don't want the teacher to start singling my child out because they don't like me." And so there are so many little obstacles that we don't even think of, that we, didn't even come to our mind. And I'm just wondering if perhaps there's something that we can do, because yes, we do need to have that family engagement, but we also need to have something in place that empowers parents to interact in a way that can be productive for their child.
Perhaps we've, you know, we've had programs, we've had people come in and present things because of exemplary programs. Perhaps we need to find places that are doing an exemplary job of parental involvement and have them come and talk to us, and then maybe do some things after that to support that.
Right, yes, I like that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Dina?
Well, I would just say that my request for more information about data collection probably belongs under this request, so we'll, I'll make sure it's added. Thank you.
We've got you down twice, okay. Anything else? Well, ladies and gentlemen, I'll see you at 9:00 in the morning. We are in recess.